Call the Wichita Board of Education Meeting of June 10th in order. The Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. All board members are here, and would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Tonight's Pledge of Allegiance is going to be conducted by the South High JROTC cadets, with Sergeant Major Andrea Yell, Private Alex Lopez, Captain Thelma Hamilton, and Private Aurelius Pedeleus. You may present the colors.
Orders, colors. 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 Applied allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join with me thanking the South High JROTC. And thank you for understanding that we're going to have our summer meetings here at AMAC due to construction work at North High, and we look forward to getting back to North High this fall. And at this moment, I'd like to also recognize Kathy Bond for a special announcement related to JROTC.
Thank you, President Reeser. I would like everyone to please join with me in a very happy birthday to our Colonel Shannon Poole. I can safely tell you that he is still under 60, but over 50. Happy birthday, Colonel!
And thank you. Patrick, first item, please.
First item, student success.
Welcome, Wendy.
Welcome. I'm Wendy Johnson, Division Director of Strategic Communications for the Wichita Public School District. President Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and Board leaders. Some might think that the work stops when the school year ends, but that is absolutely not the case. We continue to prepare and support to assure that in the fall, we have the best and brightest educators and facilities prepared to accommodate our kits. So tonight, we have two items that celebrate success both this year and going into the future. The first is recognition of the third cohort of our aspiring building leaders. I almost said inspiring because I think they are. There are 15 educators that Executive Director of Elementary Schools, Chris Went, and Executive Director of Secondary, Kristy Myers, will introduce you to here in just a few moments. These are individuals that are in classrooms and in buildings now, but as the title suggests, aspire to lead our buildings into the future. It's a really amazing group of people. I've seen some of them in action in classrooms. We've recognized many of them often, and so it's a pleasure to be able to celebrate them tonight for the commitment they've made to growing themselves as leaders in our district. So without further ado, Chris and Kristy, if you could step forward, and aspiring building leaders, this is a different setup, so as you all step forward, why don't you come over to my left here?
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you so much. First, let me say, Dr. Meyer is not here tonight. She's a little bit under the weather, so I'm going to be taking on her responsibilities tonight, but I wanted to say good evening to President Reeser, Vice President Albert, to Superintendent Beilefeld, and to our board members. My name is Chris Went. For those of you who have not yet met, I get to serve as the Executive Director for elementary schools, and if you are a board member that I have met, my name is still Chris Went, and I still serve the elementary schools as Executive Director. And I am excited to be here with you tonight to introduce you to some amazing teacher leaders who are going to be, in fact, some amazing building leaders. And this is Cohort Three of our Aspiring Building Leading Program. What I'd like to do is tell you a little bit about the program before introducing them, just to give you some background on where the genesis of this program started and why we hope to continue it into many years into the future. So five years ago, we created the Aspiring Building Leader Program with the understanding that we wanted to have an intentional succession plan for our administrators. We knew that we needed a bench, and we also knew that looking at our forecasts, we had people who were going to retire. We knew that nationwide retention of administrators was getting harder, so we wanted to be intentional about that work to make sure our students and our staff had solid leaders like these folks to carry us into the future. So we have created this program very intentionally. We have done it with an equity lens. We have done it with the professional standards for educational leaders, and I think we've had some fun along the way as well, right? And you are not going to find a better group of administrators, future administrators, for our district and for our kids. One point of pride I do want to share with you that I'm not even sure that you all know about how special they are and about how special this program is. Wichita Public Schools was chosen last year as one of 47 school districts in the nation to work with the Wallace Foundation on the Principal Pipeline Initiative, and so we hold that really near and dear to our heart as a group of leaders who are cutting-edge to help, again, our students and our staff be the best that they can be. So let's talk a little bit about what they did over the course of last year. We had over 90 applicants apply for this program, so if you think about that, you don't see 90 people here. This is the cream of the crop. From those 90, we then did interviews. From those interviews, then we chose our 15. So it's a pretty rigorous application program, and these folks did an amazing job throughout the entire time we were together. They committed 18 weeks of learning, so think about that. Full-time teachers, family, other responsibilities, and they decided to give 18 nights out of their year last year to this work. So every Tuesday after a long day of teaching, they would come see us for about an hour and a half. We did feed them, so we had dinner afterwards, right? And that was always pretty fun, but we also had a good time. And the program itself is set up where we have a lot of our district leaders who present. We also have building principals who are current leaders present. Myself, Dr. Meyer, and a couple other folks who were able to give leadership information about our PSLS, the professional standards, but also to be thoughtful about intentional culture, to create trust, and to, again, think about everything we do with an equity lens for our students and our staff. And so finally, let me just say how appreciative I am of the board's support of this program. This has been something we've been doing for five years. We have Cohort Three up here. We have Cohort Four selected, and they're starting again next semester, and it's going to be a lot of fun. So thank you for your support of this very important work. I think it's time to celebrate you. So Doctor and Doctor, Superintendent Beilefeld, if you'll come up, please. You just got a new degree. Right here with the grave. So when I call your name, if you would come up, we have a certificate and then a small token of appreciation for you to say thank you for all the hard work that you've done. When we give you the certificate and the token of appreciation, if you'll just head back there and stand and wait for us to be done, that'd be amazing. Okay? One per. There you go. Okay. So let's start with Amber. Amber Edomwani, come on up.
I'll give you two.
Congratulations. Brentay Berry. And it is okay to clap for these folks. They worked really hard. Dana Tisdale cannot be with us tonight. Debra Romero. Erin cannot be with us tonight either, so let's move to Hannah Shaki. And that, I believe, wraps up all of our folks. Once again, I want to say thank you for all of the work that you did. I know it's a lot of work, and as Superintendent just mentioned, we have coaches in the group. We have people who are doing all sorts of work after school, and for you to commit to the work that you did, so amazing. So one more round of applause, please. And before we dismiss them to sit back down, we're ready for any questions or comments that you might have.
Thank you, Chris. Kathy?
So you said administration. What kinds of positions are they going to be working in?
Anyone want to answer that, or you want me to take it? There you go. Come on up, Amber.
I'm Amber Edomwani. I'm going to be Assistant Principal at Menahol Elementary.
I'm Heidi Dryling. I'm going to be an Assistant Principal at East High.
I'm Brentay Berry, and I'll be Assistant Principal at Allen Elementary.
Jaron Ogles. I'll be the Assistant Principal at Southeast High School.
So Kathy, just the short answer is building leaders. So what we're hoping to do is grow our Assistant Principals and our Principals. And we have, just as a little bit more background, Cohort One and Cohort Two, we actually had 13 out of 15 of those leaders placed as Assistant Principals and now Principals. So our success rate's really high. This year, we have four of our group who are already Assistant Principals, and I can't wait to see what we do in the future. So yeah, great question. Very welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
For our second student success item tonight, you will have a chance to meet and recognize the dedicated educators who have helped some of our most challenged students achieve that ultimate measure of success, which is high school graduation. So through the Graduation Advocacy Program, which was created through the Title I Neglected and Delinquent Youth Program, these educators have done really remarkable work and remarkable focus. So without further ado, I'm pleased to invite DeeDee Strout to come on up. And again, for those of you who will be coming forward for the recognition, if you would step to my left so we can applaud your work, that would be fabulous.
Good evening, Superintendent Beilefeld, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, and esteemed board members. Many of you already know, I'm DeeDee Strout, and I get to serve and support a variety of different initiatives. So I've been up here for a lot of different reasons, but I will allow my colleague Denise to introduce herself.
Hi, I am Denise Lawson, and I am the Title Services Manager for the district, and I'm also the homeless liaison. And I have had the privilege of working with this group of people, well, most of them, for the last five years, and I can tell you, they are pretty amazing, so.
So it is with great enthusiasm that Denise and I stand before you tonight to celebrate not one, but two amazing teams that we've had the opportunity to support this last year. First, our dedicated neglected and delinquent team who tirelessly support youth in foster care and those transitioning to and from the juvenile justice facilities at the secondary level. Their unwavering commitment ensures these students remain on path to graduation, providing the necessary support to pave their way for success. They counsel, mentor, and support large caseloads of students, making them aware of benefits, opportunities, and the next steps needed to continue on that path. They help students navigate challenges and are a constant advocate, ensuring nothing stands in the way of helping our students become future-ready. I could go on and on, but I do want to take an opportunity to recognize our neglected and delinquent team now. And Heather Leese. So through the ongoing efforts to support these unique populations of students, this amazing team of individuals saw a need for our system-involved youth, and with our COVID relief funding, created a standout initiative called the Graduate Advocacy Program. Also known as GAP, this program offers unique pathways for graduation. Wichita Public Schools is dedicated to serving all students, and these staff recognize that for some unique circumstances make continuing education in a comprehensive building difficult without a smaller setting and specific accommodations to meet the needs of this population of students. This innovative program has been instrumental in bolstering our graduation rates. It operates at Chester Lewis Alternative High School in Gateway this year, and this program in the last 18 months has assisted over 40 students in reaching graduation, with these students collectively earning a significant number of credits. So some would start with just a few, some only needed a few, but some went from three and four credits to achieving 21 just in those 18 months with those necessary accommodations and the supports from this particular team. Of course, we could not do it without partnering with other departments in our district, like our Equity and Diversity Team led by Dr. Polite. I do want to give a shout-out to him and his team. They've been amazing. Thank you so much for all of the support. But tonight, I want to recognize the staff for these two particular programs because their tireless work is part of the reason that these students have made the gains, recovered the credits, achieved their credits, and achieved graduation. So we do have two of our staff members who could not be here tonight, and that's Tammy Hayes and Patricia Olison. I'm sorry I don't have a gift certificate for you, Mr. Mitchell, but it takes dedicated leaders at those particular buildings to work with us and to help us advocate for our students and also just break down barriers. So thank you to you as well. And then, yeah, shout-out to... And then recognizing our Chester Lewis staff, Leroy decided not to come up, but shout-out to Leroy back there. And then our teacher and para at Chester Lewis, I want to recognize Bree Moore. And Matt Kreisman. And I know we only have a couple minutes, but I want to give Matt an opportunity to share a little bit about his experience.
Welcome, Matt.
I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to do this program. USD 259 is a very innovative district, and I think this is one of the most innovative programs we have in our district. First-hand experience with these students when they come in, they tell me they're not going to graduate. They tell us they're not going to graduate, and then when they do, they can't believe they did. And a lot of times, they'll tell us that they were the first person in their family to graduate. The pride that you see in the things that this program does for students is just truly amazing, and I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to do this.
And I too want to say thank you, and we are looking at, even though this was an ESAR-funded initiative, we are looking at ways to continue this great work on. So it will not be ceasing just because we're losing that support. So one more round of applause to thank these teams. Appreciate your work. Are there any questions or anything?
I don't have a question, but I did want to hop in. Am I on?
Yes.
So pretty much everywhere I talk, everywhere I go, I talk about every student, and it's not just something I say, it's something we mean. I think you've seen through our board meetings this year, we've talked about Within Reach, we've talked about Chester Lewis, we've talked about GAP. The first graduation I attended as superintendent was at JDF. We need these kids. These kids matter. They have value. They have worth. So for me to say all that is great. These people with a heart for kids to truly make a difference in their lives, this isn't just a job, this is changing lives, changing futures. And so I personally want to say thank you for all that you do and for your leadership. So great work.
And before you leave, Melody?
I just need to be able to say publicly to each and every one of you, your work is no less than remarkable. Because of the student population that you work with, because of the passion that you bring to the table every day that you're working with them, I had an opportunity to visit both, well, the three facilities. I started, I think, at JDF, and DeeDee Strout is fantastic, too. I mean, I have to give a shout-out to you. But it started with a meeting with Denise. I went in and I wanted to talk about, actually, I went in to talk about, it wasn't Title I, but it was at risk. And we ended up having this phenomenal conversation about Title I dollars and where we spend them and how we spend them, and the good that it does within our district in terms of reaching the very individuals that it's intended to reach. And from there, DeeDee automatically said, "Love for you to see what this program does." So that's when she scheduled out a tour where I started at JDF. I went on to Gateway and then ended up at Chester I Lewis. And I, Leroy Parks, I don't know why you aren't up here. Yeah, but, and, come on. This is a dream team. You are a dream team because, just as our superintendent has just said, every student matters. Every student future-ready, so we can't cross off any of them, and that's what you don't do. And you just continue to pour into these students day after day, and you get the graduation, I would call them dividends, that really do reap dividends across our city. So it is just no short order for me to be able to, from a board member perspective, really be thankful and be publicly very positive about the work that you do. And I am hopeful that as a board, we look at the outcomes. We look at how these dollars have netted us this much in terms of individual success and how that ripples across our community. And if we're going to look at investing, GAP is where we need to invest more. Every building would benefit from having a GAP program. We would benefit from having a very designated, I don't know if the individual would be a case manager, but a point person that would be able to connect the dots and ensure that this is a very fluid system so that we're knowing what's happening at each one of our sites that's actually offering GAP. So again, thank you, and keep doing the good work. You have support.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Public Communications.
We have one speaker, Walt Chapel.
Thank you very much, Patrick. Appreciate that. Some of you know Joe Friday? Says nothing but the facts, man, just the facts, okay? So I always try to come prepared to speak at times before this board with information that is factual. It's taken days of time, sometimes several weeks, to compile on single pieces of paper, and you have one of them today that took at least a week to pull together from 2017 through 2023. It shows the revenue for this school district rose 25% from the state. You got 152% increase from federal funds. Of course, those are not spent. Then you have 7% increase in local money, and total revenues went up 35%. Now, one of the main things you'll notice here is the dollars per pupil. It went from $14,000 up to $20,000 per kid to teach in this school district. Now, the whole idea here is to follow the money. You seven board members have a major responsibility to try to dig deep enough into the facts to really understand what's going on. Where's it going? How did it get there? How was it spent? Why don't we have a balanced budget? So the second page here is an analysis I did based upon this week's budget and the agenda that you folks have in front of you. I took the time to go through each of the budget items on your consent agenda. It totals $21 million, and you're supposed to vote on yes or no with just the raise of your hand. Back on the back table, you have another document. There's all these different treasury warrants. You look at the bottom line there, it says $50 million. So just this meeting alone, you're going to go through $70 million, and you've had no say over where this money's going to go. Now, my main concern is that my... Now, my main concern is that much of this money has already been allocated to contractors, to attorneys, to various groups. None of it specified for future-ready equipment, for 3D printers, for opportunities for kids to have robotics, to learn something about computer programming. The computers that are needed need to be in the classroom. These teachers need the support that you can provide. But most of that money gets spent before you ever get to those future-ready needs. So I'm here to advocate for those children, those students, and those teachers to make sure that you have a chance to ask questions before you approve any of the consent agenda, that you find out why there are so many of these contractors given open-ended options to continue to have more money put into their coffers when you already have staff on your payroll who are dedicated and skilled technicians to maintain the equipment we have in our buildings. So please follow the money, please ask questions, please get to the bottom line without saying, "Well, we've got to have more money, we've got to fully fund schools." That's great, but make sure it gets to the classroom and to the kids who need it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Walt. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Education, WPS Every Student Future-Ready Strategic Plan Goals Update.
Kelly, I'll let you introduce the topic.
Well, I'm always proud to introduce Gil Alvarez, Deputy Superintendent. A couple weeks ago, I don't remember the exact meeting, but we provided you an update on the data dashboard with some holes in it, in the data, because we didn't have all the data compiled yet. So tonight, we just wanted to have a touch point on an update on that, that we do have all of that information in, and then some talk about goals, at least for the year. So I'll pass it off to Gil, take it away, man.
Welcome, Gil.
Good evening, Superintendent Beilefeld, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to provide you an update to our Every Student Future-Ready Strategic Plan. But I'll introduce myself as well. For those that may be listening or watching, I am the proud Deputy Superintendent Gil Alvarez of the Premier School District in the state of Kansas. Glad to be here with you tonight. Before I get to the actual content, I did want to reflect on the picture on this first slide that we have up. It's, you see the joy on these students' faces of graduation, which kind of tells a story. Graduation is a pre-K through 12 accomplishment. Pre-K and kindergarten teachers and staff, they get them ready, or they get them school-ready. Elementary, middle, and high school get students life-ready. And also, all levels will get them college and career-ready. So it's just, it's telling to see the end of graduation and the joy and the smiles. I know a lot of you went to a lot of different graduation ceremonies, so we're excited to see this particular graduation time. Now, we do have one more graduation to come, too, that's very exciting. We have our summer graduation that is next week on June 20th at 7:00 PM here at AMAC. So that's just a reminder, because that's another great opportunity for our students to are finishing up some of those credits to be able to graduate. But looking at the picture, think about how many adults and friends that have positively impacted these students for graduation. I am truly grateful for all the teachers and support staff that have helped our graduating seniors reach this milestone. And I believe that that is exactly what the strategic plan is about. It's aligning our systems, preparing our students, and building relationships so they can get where they want to go. If I asked everybody to close their eyes and think about somebody who's made an impact in their life, you're probably going to think of a teacher or a coach. That is what's happened to these students here for elementary, it could be pre-K, elementary, middle, or high, that have made this moment special for these students and made a true impact to get them where they are today. So I just wanted to start with that. But I'm actually here to talk about our strategic plan and specific our student success outcomes. So on the slide, on the next slide, you can see the three specific outcomes, which are increased academic achievement and graduation rate, prepare students for life, college, and career success, and Goal Three, create and enhance safety and belonging. Each one of these areas of our strategic plan truly set ourselves, or set our students up for success all the way up to graduation. Before I get into the data and the measures, the next slide is talking, it looks like a triangle, upside-down triangle, but I'm going to call it a funnel. The top part of the funnel is our student success outcomes. It's tied in with our goals and the specific measures for each of those goals. And that's the very top layer. Going down to the next layer are our interim goals by level. We had heard feedback in the past that our, how are each level of our organization, from elementary to middle to high, how do they own these specific goals? How do they feel connected and make it relevant for them? So we made sure that each of the goals has what we call interim goals that are tied and aligned to our overall wildly important goals of student success. The next layer after the interim goals are the action steps. So from our interim goals, we're going to also show some action steps that are tied into, in order to succeed and leverage, to make sure that we meet our interim goals. And then the bottom part of the funnel is our building and department goals and their lead measures. So I'm sharing this visual for you because it's going to lay out our strategic plan starting in August of next school year. So that is the visual of it. In the past, the board has approved that these first two student success outcomes and measures at a previous board meeting. But I want to focus on the actual measures themselves because the one on Goal Three was specifically the one that we did not have a percentage yet because we were setting the baseline. But let me go through each one first. So Goal Number One, our student success measure is increase graduation rate from 79.2% to 85% by 2029. The second goal, the life readiness goal, is the percentage of students earning five or more post-secondary assets prior to graduation will reach at least 50% by 2029. And then the third goal of safety and belonging, increase the percentage of students that feel safe and connected to their school from 80.3% to 90% by 2029. I highlighted the 80.3 to show you that is our actual baseline. We had our survey that was given to students, starting in, it was in actual May. But in April, we had to do the opt-in for our parents to make sure that students opted into the particular survey. So we got to an average of 80.3. But let me give you some of the survey results by level. Our elementary percentage of students that feel safe and connected was 83.8% in our elementary schools. In middle schools, it was 77.6%. And in our high schools was 79.4%, which gave us an average total of 80.3, which you see highlighted on this particular slide, which will be our baseline for Goal Number Three. So what, what did we actually, or what was shared, or what questions did we have on the safety and belonging survey? We define belonging as feeling accepted, included, and welcomed. So elementary had eight questions, which you see on this particular slide, one through eight were the eight questions that elementary students answered. And then secondary had one additional question added, and that's question number nine. So in secondary, middle, and high had questions one through nine asked. And so we took those questions to get our 80.3% of our baseline. Some of the survey data that we have for you is elementary, the participation of the survey. In elementary, we had about 2,246 students that participated in the survey. In middle school, we had 2,324 students participate. And in high school, we had 1,959 students participate. And remember this, we had to get opt-in approval first before we could allow our students to take the survey. So that's just some safety survey that we gave to our students. In the process, as we're thinking of the, for the next five years to 2029, which is the top two rows, but we also want to think of, how are we going to monitor progress? And how do we know that we're getting to our goals in 2029? So we have set year-one goals and milestones yearly to make sure to monitor where we currently are. So for the first goal of graduation, our year-one goal next year in the 24, 25 school year, we're going to increase graduation rate from 79.2% to 81% by May of 2025. You can see that 2025 is the year goal versus the 2029 of the overall strategic plan goal. So this is at least a 1% increase each year to reach 85% by 2029 for Goal Number One. Our Goal Number Two, Life Readiness, this is the percentage of students earning five or more post-secondary assets prior to graduation will reach at least 10% by May 2025. And you may be thinking, well, 10% seems a little low as we start. Well, part of that is, we don't know what our current percentage is due to creating our tracking mechanism. So this is the year that we are creating that. We have not, and here in a second, the next slide's going to share with you and show you how many post-secondary assets we are going to be able to track or going to try to track to make sure that we can get our students to that five or more post-secondary assets. There are many of these assets to track, so we have not advertised these assets to our current high school students yet. But that is a plan going into next school year. And just as a reminder, these post-secondary assets, and there's a difference, I always like to say this, our current incoming ninth graders, so the class of 2028, is the class that will shoot and have to get at least two post-secondary assets for graduation. But we're, we know that if they can get to five, that we really have prepared them for college and career and success for post-secondary success is the reason why we kind of up those post-secondary assets for Goal Number Two. And Goal Three is about a 2% increase each year to reach 90% by 2029. And that goal is 80.3% to 82.3% by May of 2025. So you can see, these are what we call milestones along the way. We want to see how well we can do and make sure that we're on track to meet our strategic plan goal. And we will be coming to you for more presentations going into next school year on some of the data and progress we're making within not only the overall goals, but also our interim goals by level as well. You can see the list of, this next slide is the list of the post-secondary assets. So those two post-secondary assets for graduation for the class of 2028. But we're also going to be monitoring and tracking how many post-secondary assets that our students will get before graduation as well. You also have a handout that kind of gives you a little bit more information about these particular post-secondary assets. So you can look through that particular handout because it gives a little bit more information about some of those if you're wondering what those mean. But that is a good list of opportunities for our students to get before they graduate. So as I close, I'd like to bring it all together. So let's start with, coming back to this funnel graphic, just taking a visual of what the format looks like and the alignment of our strategic plan, starting with the student success outcomes, down to our interim goals by level, to the action steps in order to meet those goals, and then down to our building and department goals when our schools will look at their own individual school data to create their goals as well as some lead measures. So what they do there is going to impact the entire system and impact us all the way up to our strategic plan goals. Now that you can visualize this alignment from the funnel graphic, let's look at a plan with data and goals. So the next slide, which we bring it all together, you'll see starts with the student success outcomes and the measure itself. Those are highlighted and bolded. And then you can actually see the high school interim goals for each of those, which is to increase the percent of unique students scoring a 21 or higher on the ACT or scoring a silver or higher on the ACT work keys from 34.2% to 37.7% by spring of 2025. That is our Goal Number One for high school, our interim goal. For life readiness, 100% of students will be monitored each month during advocacy on their progress toward post-secondary assets. And then for our high school interim goal, for Goal Number Three, increase average daily attendance from 86.7% to 90.5% by the end of May 2025. Our middle school interim goals will be looking at eighth grade math. So decrease the percent of students scoring a 1 from 66.9% to 64.9% on eighth grade math state assessment. We hope by continuing to decrease that, that our students will be prepared to make sure that they complete Algebra I by the end of ninth grade is tied into that particular goal. For Goal Number Two in middle school, 100% of current eighth graders will complete a five-year plan by the end of May 2025. And for middle school, for the Goal Number Three, increase average daily attendance from 89.5% to 93.2% by the end of May in 2025. And then our elementary school interim goals, decrease the percent of students scoring a 1 from 47.5% to 45.5% on third grade reading state assessment by spring of 2025. The Goal Number Two for elementary, for interim goal, increase the percent of ages and stages questionnaire completed from 79.4% to 81% by the end of September of 2024. It's when we will know how many families have completed the ages and stages, which will allow us to know what skills we need to work on for our kindergarten students to be kindergarten-ready. And Goal Number Three, increase average daily attendance from 91.5% to 93.8% by the end of May 2025 for elementary attendance. We also added a system support interim goal. So these are areas of our system that are not directly in attendance areas or buildings. So we have for Goal Number One, increase the percent of fully qualified instructional staff from 87% to 90% by May of 2025. We will bring back some of that information and data for you at the beginning, probably around October-ish for this particular item and maybe even bring it back at the end of the school year so we can see how well we have done within fully qualified instructional staff in our classrooms. For Goal Number Two, by spring of 2025, WPS will have a fully implemented system to track post-secondary assets. And I talked about that a little bit. That is one of the big ones that we're trying to accomplish to make sure that we can track all post-secondary assets. And then Goal Number Three, for safety and belonging, the interim goal is increase the percent of students trained in restored or practices from 79% to 81% by May 2025. And we do believe that a lot of these particular goals, once again, we need to think about the funnel, will align itself all the way up so we can see our lag measures of our overall goals being impacted positively as we go through our strategic plan. So now that you've seen kind of the data officially of where we are for heading into next school year, we also have a, what I call a data dashboard or a scoreboard for us to follow. And this is outward-facing. So board members, you do have a handout that is tied to this particular slide. But if those that want to see and monitor our progress, it's also on our website. So this scoreboard will be on our website, and we'll update the scoreboard as progress is being made so every, so everyone can monitor our particular progress. You can find this scoreboard by going to our website, by clicking on the About WPS on the top ribbon, then click on WPS Strategic Plan, then click on Data Dashboard, and you will see the Student Success Outcome Scoreboard. You can also learn more about each of these goals from this particular site on our website. So this will, we'll continue to update and monitor this and make sure it's on our website as we look to monitor our progress throughout our strategic plan for the next five years. So our strategic plan journey and next steps. You've seen this particular slide before, but back in December is when we first came to you with the outcomes and measures of the, of our student success. We presented to the board in December. And then in February and March, these work groups developed the interim goals I just shared with you. In April, the interim goals presented to the board and principals. And May through July, which is what we're doing now, to finalize our action steps aligned to the interim goals, develop the launch plans, and finalize our dashboard and tracking tools. We'll do that in preparation to launch the entire strategic plan August of 2024. So we have opportunity for a toolkit for our principals to present to staff, but as well as us presenting it during Teacher Report Week in August to make sure that everybody is familiar and aware of our strategic plan as well as how it aligns to the success of their own particular buildings as they look at their own data to create their own building goals as well. So with that, that concludes the strategic plan update. So I'm open for any questions that you may have around the strategic plan.
Julie?
Thank you for this update. This is great information, appreciate all your hard work. My question is related to the data dashboard, which is great. This has been something board members have wanted to have, and so it's good to see this has come to completion. It's very clear to read. How often should we anticipate this information updating and changing on the website? I don't want to go in every day looking for it if it's only going to change once a month. Do you anticipate how often it will change? Do you anticipate how often it will change?
Well, a lot of these too are lag measures, so some of it we won't know, like for graduation, for example. We won't know that until the following school year, so we'll update it as soon as the data is given to us. Sometimes we may even present some preliminary data to you before it actually is updated when it gets finalized and cleaned up. We'll also bring back to you some of the interim goal percentages and progress as well. But a lot of the ones up here, we're, we're going to do it as often as we, we can, but because it's a lag measure, it may, it won't, it may not, some of them may not be every month, but we'll do it as, as much as we can throughout the school year to make sure.
So probably every month would be the, on the, would be the quickest.
I would say yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Gil. How are you?
Wonderful, thank you.
Good. Great information. I have some questions that are very specific to interim goals under goal number one. More specifically, elementary school, third grade reading state assessments and under system support, fully qualified instructional staff in all positions. When you look at what might impact positively third grade reading state assessment scores, I believe we could probably all agree that the newer program, and it is not new, but the newer program that USD two-five-nine has trained several teachers in, and that is letters, the science of reading, that that has produced some positive outcomes in terms of increasing or the potential for increasing third grade reading assessment. Is that, are we in agreement on that?
I, I would say yes. I think there's part of that, but there's other, um, other things that could be impacting as well, but letters has made a difference.
Absolutely. It is not the only, it's just one component.
That is correct.
So in understanding that, how many teachers would you say that we've actually trained so far?
We have trained close to seventeen hundred staff members, but that, that includes teachers, coaches, administrators, psychologists, et cetera. So we've, we've allowed for a lot of staff at the elementary level to participate.
And probably paras also, my guess is. Have we trained any paras in letters?
Uh, I'm trying to look for, I, I think, I think so, but I don't want to sit there and say yes.
Certainly. I mean, I'm thinking that if not, then we'll definitely, hopefully we'll open it up because they're assisting. And with that, what is our plan to increase those numbers?
We, we want to sustain and increase. So this, this coming year, we, we are going to do volume two of letters training. So we, obviously the, it's, it does cost, so we have to make sure that, obviously we use the ESAR funds to begin this journey. We are finishing up with the state ESAR funds, the money that they have in order to complete volume two. So we, so coming up for this school year will be volume two, which is more around language comprehension and reading comprehension.
Okay. My understanding is that there's been an extension or there's an opportunity to apply for the extended dollars for two thousand and twenty-six. There are ESAR dollars that have been extended, but it's through application format?
If, if that's the case, then we'll definitely, because we, even after that, for sustainability purposes, we knew teachers coming in.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're going to approach it as a cohort model. It may not be as comprehensive as we've been doing for the last three years, but needing some opportunities for new teachers to get some of that training as well.
Excellent. And I'm, I'm just saying that this is information from KDSE that they have extended and/or spun out the application opportunity for districts to apply for the extended, because it's, it's been signed off on at the federal level, so there will be additional ESAR dollars that we can potentially access through two thousand and twenty-six.
That's wonderful.
And with, it, it really is, because that allows us to do more and sustain what we have already currently done. So when looking at, um, when looking at our Kansas Student Achievement Accountability and looking at USD two-five-nine more specifically, I'm trying to understand the definition of, and I had it here. It's when we, let me see. So we're at, our, our level is low, and I think what it's, and I'm trying to, I need to have that actually open to the current page, but maybe I have it here. I do. So when you look at ESSA, that is Every Student Succeed Act, there's, there's an annual meaningful different, differentiation that is posted on every, for every district that we have. And, and our district is below. Do you know what that entails? I'm, I'm really trying to get a grasp. Is that because of our, that's, is that related to and/or correlated to our, our actual assessment scores? And maybe the superintendent would have this information, I'm not sure.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not quite sure what data you're referring to, so it's hard for me to, to answer that.
It's longitudinal data that we can, that you can actually access on KDSE under, for USD two-five-nine.
What's the difference?
I'm trying to understand what it, annual meaningful differentiation means. It's, there's a definition for it, but I'm trying to understand it from our perspective.
I can look into that for you.
Okay.
Give you, give you an update.
If you would, that, that would be great, because when we're looking at being able to increase, and we're looking at doing this by interim goals, then we're also going to be looking at fully qualified instructional staff in all positions. And I know that, and we're doing a pretty good job of that, with the trainings. However, I know that we'll need to continue doing that in order to really bulk up our staff so that we have fully qualified instructional staff in all positions. And if I recall in your presentation, that's increased, that there, there has been an increase in the qualified persons that are, are teaching, and we're, and we want to continue to do that.
That's correct. I, I think our baseline right now is at eighty-seven percent. I know HR looked at that, I think this morning, to make sure that we confirm that particular percentage, so eighty-seven percent, and we're trying to get up to over ninety percent.
Exactly. I think closer to ninety, ninety-three percent, which is excellent, would be excellent. The only additional questions I have, these are just, you know, me trying to really understand how to relate our, our goals to what we know is also being mandated by KDSE and some of the acronyms that they use. And so, you know, EEP, Education Preparation Providers, I think that is what this system of support, fully qualified instructional staff in all positions would fall up under is us being able to actually meet, meet that, where we have preparation and we are providing the training for those individuals. So, um, one last question. Structural, when you look at structural literacy and dyslexia training that's required for new teachers, are there requirements for current teachers to stay proficient? I don't even, you know, from a teaching license perspective, is there a requirement for them to have additional training in order to stay proficient in that?
Our, our current letters training meets the dyslexia guidelines as well as structured literacy, and you are correct, the new teachers do have to go through a professional learning with some modules and our new teacher induction, and we'll present those particular modules for our new staff to, to complete.
Okay. Current staff, do they have, is there any additional training for them?
They're, they're training in letters, so that the letters training that they're receiving currently fits under that dyslexia and structured literacy.
But they only get that training once unless it's refreshed, is all I'm asking?
Yeah, correct. Unless, unless we figure, we don't want professional learning to go away from what they've learned, so we would recycle that back into some of our other professional learning opportunities, district and services that we have.
Absolutely.
So we'll, as part of our sustainability plan, we'll do that also.
See, all this, what this does by me asking additional questions, which leads to another question, it just clarifies for me exactly how we're meeting this, so it's, it's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll have to look into the annual meaningful differentiation. I'm on Data Central and I can't find that term, but anyway, we can connect later, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Gil.
Thank you all.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, executive session.
I move the board recess into an executive session to receive legal advice regarding transactions involving real property with the board's legal counsel pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and the open meeting will resume in this room at seven twenty-five.
Is there a second? Seconded by Melody, moved by Diane to move into executive session. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. Wichita Board of Education is Reed Cavini from executive session. No action taken, no action needed. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, consent.
Hazel. I would like to move that we table motions, Consent E. five, Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash two, Resolution to declare former Park Elementary School surplus, and number six, Option Agreement Regarding Ten Twenty-Five North Main Street until our June twenty-seventh meeting. Now that the City of Wichita has released their comprehensive plan for the multi-agency center, I would like to receive additional information before making a decision on these two items.
Moved by Hazel, uh, seconded by Kathy to table the two items regarding Park Elementary to, um, a June twenty-seventh meeting, and also, I don't think it has to be in the motion, but we may schedule a workshop in between. But that, but that's not in the motion, but we'll try to get that done. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. So now we have the rest of the consent agenda. Knock, do you have any items you need to pull?
I have nothing to pull.
Hazel?
I have nothing to pull.
Uh, I have no consent items to pull. Diane?
I have nothing to pull.
Melody?
I do have items to pull.
Okay. Which ones?
Uh, it's going to be under, uh, number five, on-call concrete, number six, on-call electrical, number seven.
Oh, the on-calls?
The on-calls. All of the on-calls.
Um.
It's just a quick question.
Yes. I'm trying to, do you know which ones are all?
Yeah. C, it is C five through C nine?
Thank you. That's what I was trying to.
C.
Any other, Melody?
No, that's, that should be it, I think. Let me make.
Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Kathy?
Nothing to pull.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda except for items C five through nine, the on-call items. Moved by Stan and seconded by Hazel to approve the rest of the consent agenda except for the ones that were tabled and C five through nine. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero. C five, six, seven, eight, and nine are all on-call for roofing, mechanical, general, electrical, and, and concrete. Melody?
So my question, and this may be a Luke question, I, being new on the board, I am not familiar with the term on-call. Exactly what does it mean? What does it entail? What are we responsible for?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Luke knows better than I do, so take it away. All right, yeah. So those are basically just agreements that we have available for emergent needs that might come up from time to time. Because of our limitation to only spend, we can't spend beyond twenty thousand dollars on a specific project without bidding, that gives us the ability to, to bid work out that comes up. Say we have a roof leak or an HVAC failure that we need to address immediately, that gives us a contract available to tap into, to bring in the labor and complete the work and get it done quickly, so we don't have to wait on putting bid documents together. A lot of times, we don't use all of that board authority that we, that we come to you for approval, but we have it there in case we need it. But as much as we can, we, we bid work out, but this is just an avenue to, to get work done immediately if needed. But this work does, we do bid it out as well, so we bid it out as a labor rate, so it's all been competitively bid and, and is awarded based on that.
So let me make sure I understand, is it, is it, is it just an open, is it like a placeholder? I mean, is, or is this an actual job that needs to be, these are not actual jobs that need to be done?
Correct. Not, it's, it's in case we need it. So if we have a roof failure, you know, later this fall, and we have to get it fixed immediately, and it's over twenty thousand dollars, it would give us the ability to tap into that contractor that we've already awarded to, to get them out there immediately and get the work done.
So it's, is it based on previous pro forma? What is it based on that we actually have all of these?
The award or?
I mean, because they're not actual, they're not jobs right now, correct?
Right.
So what is, what is?
It's like having a plumber on-call. It's like having a mechanical in person on-call.
And their experience shows them that those are the type of projects that potentially will need addressed immediately, and they're going to potentially be large enough that they'll be over twenty thousand, and they're potentially, say, again, being able to get the repair done in an emergent fashion in lieu of waiting the time that it takes to put out a bid spec, wait for two weeks for bids to come back in, wait for two more weeks to get it on the board agenda.
But I believe you just said that they do bid, though.
Oh, yeah. These are bid at. These are competitively bid at.
These on-calls are at.
But they're not bid according to.
Just like, just like you would individually determine who you want as your on-call plumber, you would shop around to find out who you want as your on-call plumber.
So we're giving them the authority to spend up to this amount of money?
No, they don't have that authority. We have the authority.
We have the authority, but we are giving you or, so who, does this come back before us if it's an emergency or not?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Does this come, does, when an actual emergency happens, does this come in front of the board, or is it you that makes the decision?
Yeah, it would be me that would make the decision.
Okay.
So, but going back to your question, I think, on how it was bid out, it, it's based on the labor rates, because to your point, it's impossible to know what the scope of work will be until it actually happens. So the way we bid it is just purely based on those labor rates from that company, and that's why we have so many of them, and it's not just one general contractor. But that, that way, we know exactly what a roofing labor rate is going to be, or an HVAC labor rate is going to be for the different categories of laborers that we have working under them. And then we just hold them accountable with the invoicing and their proposals when they send those through to verify that they are, in fact, billing us based on those labor rates that were bid.
Right. So, but do we ever know, we as a board, do we ever know when these are actually fulfilled? And what the actual cost is, what the actual dollar amount ended up being?
No, not on those scopes of work.
Okay. That's what I needed to know. Thank you. Mm-hmm. To accept it? Uh, I'm, yeah, no, I'm not going to.
Okay, I will.
Yeah. I'm, I'll make a motion to approve items C five through nine.
I'll second it.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Kathy. Any just, uh, further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Motion carries five two. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under operations, facility master plan.
Kelly?
I would like to invite forward some of our friends from Cooperative Strategies, and, no, you're good, Alloy Architecture. So Rob and David and Jeff are here to present the draft, the first version of the facility master plan tonight. I believe it will be informative and exciting and data-driven, and there's a lot to take in. So I'll pass it off to those guys, and I did want to, I did want to lift up, thank you guys for coming, for one, but Jeff is here with Alloy Architecture. Alloy Architecture is a Wichita-based firm, so, so our architects are local. I know that came up at one of the meetings about using local people, and so we, we've used Alloy for, and, and other vendors in, in the community for other things, but I just wanted to make sure we were all clear. You know, David, on the other hand, is not, right? He's from Ohio, so we won't hold that against him.
Nobody's perfect.
Well, anyway, so, take it away.
All right.
Welcome, Dave.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Kelly, it's a pleasure to be with you. It's an honor to do this work with your community and your team. This plan that we are unveiling, the first draft recommendations for tonight, step back a little bit. We see it as the goal for this plan, which we're going to get into in the presentation, is simple. To plan for you a sustainable portfolio of high-quality learning environments accessible to all. That's the thesis statement. That's what we have spent a lot of time and focus doing. The presentation that you're going to go over tonight lays out the specifics of what that draft plan is, for now, that it is the first step of more steps to complete that mission, that thesis statement. And that really, in the process to doing that, we have a couple paths to choose. You could try to do so without rebuilding your schools and simply restructuring. That's what you did in a, in a more of an emergency fashion this year, from the budget deficit standpoint. So you could restructure without rebuilding. However, in the long term, your buildings are old, many of them, they have lots of needs. There's over a billion dollars in needs in just the next five years identified for these schools, and that continues to grow. So that's going to require more operating dollars over time for those on-call and other services to come in and plug the holes, because the holes will get bigger and they're going to keep coming. So that's a, over time, that will actually divest and dilute from the resources you can bring to the classroom if you don't use capitals to rebuild. If you rebuild without restructuring, that will also dilute and over time divest from the resources in the classroom, because you have had 450 students, on average, walk out of the district every year for the last 10 years. That's two in a, about current, by current standards for the state, that's a $2.4 million in operating budget, walking out the door every year. If you don't restructure while rebuilding, the amount left over to invest in the teachers in the classroom will continue to dilute over time. And so we have to do both, districts in your position. It is restructuring through rebuilding is what we're getting at. And you have the opportunity, given the fact that you, your last bond was '08, which is a long time for a large district to wait. The benefit for you now is that you can encumber $450 million without a tax increase to start on this plan, and that's what we're recommending. So as we go through the plan here tonight, we're going to emphasize and reemphasize that this is about restructuring through rebuilding and in doing so, reimagining the opportunities for kids, not just today, but for the next 100 years. You've been, had your buildings for many of them for 100 years, and they worked. But now, your enrollment has declined to the point where you have, you're carrying too much overhead, too many buildings, in those buildings, on those buildings, those buildings have too much needs for your current populations and your budget, and that's impacting the day-to-day, as well as the buildings themselves. So we can use the capital investment to set a new course and to reimagine those opportunities for your kids. We're going to go over some of the initial community meetings that we had and survey results that we had just this past, past month, a couple months ago. We're going to talk about the plan recommendations in detail on charts and maps, how they came to be, and set up what our next steps are, including the next step of feedback. Rob, survey results.
Thank you, David. It's great to be with all of you again tonight, so, looking forward to this. I'm going to bring you some results that we have collected back in April when we did a series of community meetings. We did a community meeting in each of four areas of the school district in, during the evenings, and then during the day, we met with a number of different interest groups. I've listed those interest groups up on the, in your presentation, so you can see who it is that we were looking to visit with, communicate with, and also collect, and some information from them. So what I'd like to share with you then is some of the overall survey results. We collected results from each of the different community meetings, each of the different interest groups, as well as the Wichita Public Schools staff. So when we looked at combining all the community meetings together into one, and all the interest groups into one, you'll see that the majority of folks were really honing in on options one and two, which was looking at what David's talking about, and that's doing some restructuring through the rebuilding process. And what you'll see when we come through with these recommendations is that there were, most, a lot of the groups talked about, is there maybe possibly a combination of the options that we talked about? That's where we landed, so you'll see that as we move forward here. And one of the common probably concerns we heard was just the fact that the plan was quite long in terms of time. Well, it's about 15 to 20 years when we look at the full length of the plan, but again, looking at the investment and project base, we were looking at that being an accurate amount of time and resources needed to implement that plan over that period of time. This slide gives you some qualitative feedback that came from all of those different surveys. So when we looked at and summarized all the different comments that we received, this is the different type of categories that came out of that, as long, as well as some of the comments that came from that. I don't think anything surprises any of us here in regards to some of these topics and feedback. The top one is community engagement and transparency, something that we all want, right? We all want to make sure that the community is involved. We want to make sure that we're transparent throughout the process. I know that the team here has put together a really nice project website, so please take the time, if you haven't had a chance yet, go in, look at the project website. It has listed different meeting presentations, when the nurse meetings that are occurring, some of the information that's gone into the decision-making, some of the facility data, all of that kind of information now can be found on one website that's, seems to be very helpful, and that website will continue to be updated with the information necessary as we go out, go throughout this process. Again, just looking at a balanced approach, again, we, I talked about that, looking at a multiple combination of different options that we looked at. Efficiency and innovation, there's recognition of the need to address aging buildings and improve conditions while serving our current students, also the future students, which gets to the next one, planning for the future. Keeping in mind cost, impact, those types of things as we roll out this plan and have it implemented. And then investment in education, many express the need for improvements to Wichita schools, which you saw in those survey results on those bar graphs. Many, many people are looking at what type of rebuilding needs to occur right now, and believe in, to enhance the district's reputation and competitiveness in educational resources and attracting families back to the area. So that was another big piece of this feedback that we summarized for that. At this time, I'm going to bring, Jeff's going to come up from Alloy, and he's going to show you some cool stuff.
Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you. It's my, been my privilege to work with the staff and Cooperative Strategies as we've been going through that. And what we want to talk about here is, is, before we get into the details of what the plan is and what all the different parts are, what are we looking towards building? And so we're going to look a little bit at the work that we've done to kind of look at what we're going to build to. So one of the things, we talk about facility, facility adequacy, and this is different than facility condition. So you've heard FCI, and those are conditions, those are looking at the different systems within a building, structure, windows, HVAC systems. What we're looking at here with facility adequacy is, is the adequacy of the building for teaching. And so that includes the number of classrooms, do we have the right ratio of classrooms, the specialized rooms of art, music, and then the size of classrooms. One of the things we looked at as a district to have a 900 square foot as a standard classroom size, it gives us flexibility in the future for teaching size and the sizes of classrooms. Some additional things we looked at was, you know, the support spaces, administrative and media center, food service, special ed, ESL, all of those types of things. And then look at site features, and these kind of become difficult the smaller the site gets, the more urban they are, the, the harder it is to achieve all of these things. But we looked at drop-off and pickup, and that those things were separated safely, that we had proper circulation between the bus and the parent drop-off, and those were done safely. And additionally, playgrounds, practice fields, and such other site features. And we identified these things, and then there were, we knew there were some features that were preferred, that we would like to have, that'd be nice to have, but may not necess, be necessary at every building based upon community needs or program needs. The other thing we looked at in, looking at buildings as a model, was right sizing buildings. So smaller buildings are a little bit more costly to staff, and it's harder to get support services, so we're trying to find the right size of a building that's not too big for the students to get left behind, and how we can, even if they are slightly bigger buildings, how we can break those buildings down into smaller pieces. So out of that work, we've developed model schools. So we looked at each of the four different types of schools, standard schools within the district, elementary schools, K. eight, middle school, and high school. And we developed this, these lists of features that we felt like needed to be in those. We did this through feedback with the district leadership, through principals, and even students with super stack. And we've also developed from that different plans. What you see up here is a middle school plan that was developed as a model middle school, and again, trying to break these larger buildings down into smaller pieces. So you see kind of three classroom wings, so that'd be one for each of those grades, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So these are some of the pieces that we've developed alongside the master plan. We've also developed some renderings of what these buildings possibly could look like. So what are, if we're rebuilding a building, what would potentially a building would look like? Now, these are generic, so these are not on any specific site, but this is potentially what a new elementary school could look like that'd be part of this master plan that we're developing. We also looked at some of the teaching spaces. So this is of an open collaborative learning spaces that might be in an elementary school in between classrooms, where they could bring a cohort of third graders out, and they could do a science project, or a, a art project in the space, or have some type of collaborative learning in these spaces. We also did some studies of outdoor learning spaces. How can we maximize the use of the building inside and out for learning? And then we've developed those for all levels of, of education. So this is a rendering of a potential middle school. So these are some of the things we've developed alongside what, you'll be presented with the numbers and the different data points, but, you know, what these potential buildings could actually look like.
Thank you, Jeff. And Jeff and his team did significant work with staff in, in, in working through the program behind the pictures. And as he alluded to, there is what we would call a specification, educational specification or design specification behind all of these, including counts of spaces, the types of spaces, how big they are, how much circulation space is needed. Very detailed program there that's used to create this, to fit the capacity needs, to fit the budget needs, and to fit our sites. Jeff mentioned the school size. When we talk about rebuilding, which is an emphasis of this plan, is rebuilding schools. The first focus is dominantly on the elementaries into a lesser degree middles, and, and we'll talk about that in a minute. The elementary schools being envisioned are no larger than the ones you built in 2011 from the 2008 bond. So that's the model, more or less, if you think about size of school. It's a three to four-section school is what we're planning for elementary schools moving on, as opposed to two to three. So there's a shift, but it's within bounds of what you've historically built, and that works well. Part of the reason that works well is when we worked with Susan and the finance team, one of the charges was, I asked them early on in the process, tell me all of the services, staff, resources that you want at your premier elementary school. What does that look like? And then divide that by the average cost to do all those things, and then that will help us inform how many kids are needed. And low and behold, it was that four-section school was the magic number, which is right what you built in 2011. So that, there's a financial model that goes to that, which is important because it is a model that when we design schools to that effect, allows you to sustain that level of resource and quality. Because if you're much smaller than that across the entire district, which you are right now, something's got to give. You can't afford to do that. Okay. So I'm going to go over the recommendations and their impacts broadly. We are breaking them down into northwest, northeast, southeast, northwest, southwest quadrants of your district, just to help break it down into sizable chunks to discuss, and we did the planning. Here again is the goal. Create a financially sustainable portfolio of schools with high-quality learning environments accessible to all. Now, we have to define our terms. What do we mean by that? Next slide. Accessible to our students. On the map that you have up there is the student density from 2324. Going back over 10 years in our demography study, that has changed little. Couple pockets have shifted here and there, but by and large, that density map is very stable. It's just decreased in most areas. We took great pains, and you will see later that we measured the impact of future planned consolidations and rebuilds on accessibility for students. It is vitally important to us that when we look at these rebuilds and consolidations, that we are not creating big burdens for families to travel to schools. And what you will, you see at the end, to give away the finding, we mapped today the distance of every kid to every school in the district. We then used those, those metrics to look at the consolidations and rebuilds to measure the difference pre-post according to our plan. The average distance to a student from their school of those being consolidated within this plan is an increase of .22 to .88 miles. So we were very strategic about where we looked at these consolidations within rebuilds, because the rebuilds are first, the consolidations are into rebuilds. When we finalize the plan after feedback, we are looking at staging these recommendations over time, where you front-load the construction, which does you a couple things. One, it minimizes disruption to students. You can build first, and on all but one site, which we'll talk about, on all but one site, you can build on the green space while school's in session, and then flip the site when this, when it's done. Flipping the site meaning tear down the existing building that becomes the green space. So you're minimizing disruption. Two, when you do move, you move once, not twice. And, and it allows students to stay together. When we do the consolidations, then, it is into the new. And so those trail our construction. So accessibility, hugely important, and we're going to go through that zooming in to each area to show you how- And we're going to go through that zooming in to each area to show you how we consider that and how the plan achieves that. High-quality learning environments, of course, condition, facility adequacy, as Jeff discussed. You have a lot of buildings, a lot of schools with very small classrooms that pretty much dictate how you can and cannot teach in those spaces when they're too small for the number of kids. Financially sustainable, I mentioned some of the metrics here that we use to model, to help model the capacity, to help determine what needs to be done in the long term in terms of your total portfolio. As an underscore to this point, one of the things that you saw in previous parts of our planning up to this point was we were targeting, our goal for a district is typically to target about 85% utilization. Well, when you take the state allocation per student that you get to operate your district, and you say, well, how much more revenue would the district have to operate every year if we were at 85%? It's 43 million, which is about what your budget, deficit budget was. That's not a coincidence. Districts that we find that are in that spot are able to sustain their level of service. And what we're doing is building a plan to get there into your level of, that level of service as you defined. Site, not just the site of the school, because you have some schools, as you know, with no green space, very limited site aspects. In rebuilding, we're looking at all of those factors above, and you're in a town with a lot of parks, a lot of parks. And there's opportunities, and Kelly has started these conversations, they're not final, but started conversations about taking some park adjacent to a school, help it make more, have more green space. Maybe there's a swap opportunity. There's opportunities here to provide sites for the long term that are immediately proximate to existing schools for rebuild with better green space opportunities. So that's being looked at as well. So we're going to come back to this map multiple times. Here's the four numbers. What you see, the 400, step one, that is the plan that we are recommending as a draft plan to start with, that you move forward with today, and we're going to get feedback on. I'm going to go through and Rob will go through in detail exactly what projects fit within that step. That totals $450 million based on current conservative cost estimates. We took the current, what the market is currently bearing, and we made it more conservative because I'd rather you be able to be ahead of budget and ahead of schedule than vice versa. And broke it down, so the majority of that $450 million, 341, is rebuilding schools. There's money in there to assist with demo as needed for consolidation. You won't probably spend all of that, but that's an allocation in there. Repurposing schools, we'll get into that in a minute in the details. Adding, we're talking about adding to help create K eights at one at Cessna, and then to rebuild the Coleman Middle School. There's your adds. And then the maintenance deferred, maintain and deferred, we're talking about the remaining allocation to help supplement the needs of your high schools, which are many on a condition side. And also to, to play, fulfill this, say this early, I guess, fulfill a previous commitment from years ago to put athletic fields at the Northeast Magnet High School. The cost estimates of the total master plan, you see right now at the $2 billion. That is considering all of the future, future programs. You see the total number there, 18 consolidations in total. You've got no additional repurposes, you've got the renovations, you've got 24 total rebuilds, four total additions or new construction, then deferred maintenance on the majority of the rest of your portfolio. That's based on escalating all of these projects with conservative budget for the next five years. So to the degree that this extends beyond five years, and it will, the remaining projects will need to be considered in their next five years of sprint and what that escalation would be. This is a multi-year process. What this means is that if you were to do the full plan right now, that'd be $2 billion. You're not doing $2 billion. You can do $450 million for no tax increase and get that done in the next five to seven years, and make, get about a quarter of the way through these major projects, take a significant step in the right direction. We're going to go through all of the details here in a minute. Consolidations, as I mentioned earlier, go into rebuilds. It is one of our planning mantras and the things that we stand by, is that we want all options to be a trade-up scenario for students, which is why we look very carefully at accessibility, why we look very carefully at phasing any consolidations to trail rebuild so that kids are moving into newer facilities that are accessible to them. That we have appropriate capacity in high-density areas. You're going to see where we have a dense pocket of schools of the same configuration that are very old and have lots of needs, that's where a lot of rebuilds is being concentrated. We'll show you where that is in a minute. Orderly sequencing of changing. This cannot all happen at once. This past year, you did an all-at-once with some school consolidations that were operating budget-driven. And that is a different thing to do it if we're in acute need for operating than to plan for the long term for capital. We are talking about a phased, orderly sequence of events where the consolidations followed the new construction. I think I've said that a few times, I'll probably say it's seven more. Safety and security investments thrown along the way, in not just the rebuilding and renovations, but in the deferred maintenance budgets. Step one focuses on the elementary to maximize investment in new buildings. From the beginning of this process, we identified, as you have identified in the past, that you have a surplus of elementary schools and a lot of condition needs within them. Step two, we'll add more to the middle schools, although we take a small bite into the step one here, but middle schools will need a major focus in the next steps. And your high schools have a lot of condition needs, but as mentioned earlier, a new high school is going to $200 million venture, and that would just take away so much bandwidth right now that there's enough needs that we're concentrating the initial rebuilding, where you can get the most bang for buck, and that's the elementary into a lesser degree middles. And then you continue that on. We'll talk about that in the phasing. Okay. So here's the list. You don't need to worry about taking mental notes on all of these because we're going to go through all of these direct actions on a map here in a minute, and then we're going to drill down into those maps by sections and spend a good amount of time on this. This matrix shows the schools for identified action in step one. That's the $450 million. It shows their grade level, their region, and that is defined by us, the consultants. There are schools that are right on the line where the difference between the northeast and the northwest are meaningless. But, and they don't, what we're looking at is this has helped us organize the data, and then when we use the student density, that helped us look at in all dimensions at the same time, and that's where we built, made the rebuild and consolidation decisions, was looking at the whole picture at the same time. So for now, it's basically an organizational premise to help with the regions. See the year built, the acreage, the enrollment as projected in 28, 29, the utilization therein, the facility condition index, cost to repair divided by cost to replace in the recommendation. So I think it will make the most sense for me to go through all of the actions recommended on the visual here in just a moment. But you can see the utilizations and conditions which are major drivers here in addition to the location data that mentioned. Okay. So this map, it'd be hard to read if you're in the back here, from this screen. But I'm going to take the liberty of zooming a tick and walking you around the circle. Okay. All right. So we're going to start in the northeast of your district, and I'm going to talk through the specifics and the rationale. One, in the northeast, rebuild Adams on site. Adams Elementary School, if you look at it right here, it's this blue dot. Blue means change, this guy. It is a center, a high-density pocket of students. And, and so the, if you don't rebuild a school there, you leave a vacuum for a lot of students where there's not an accessible school. There's not another one right nearby that serves that pocket of students. So that built, that site, I'd love it to be bigger. We're looking at potential options to look at parks and that kind of thing in the immediate area, but you need to rebuild it to serve that, that community. And the condition is such, it needs to be rebuilt. So rebuild Adams on site. Little early childhood center, move it to the adjacent Chester Lewis. Build a new middle school on the Coleman site. Coleman site is one of those rare sites in your district that you have room to breathe. It's a nice, big site. So let's use it. Why would you need it? Well, Coleman Middle School has that pod structure, you know, the four spaces, the four spaceships connected together, right? You have lots of specialty programs and alternate programs in disparate places around the district in less-than-optimal buildings. You can move them in each half their own home. Gateway, Chester Lewis, and ISC can have their own home in one of those buildings. Have separation, but have the benefits of economies of scale there in one facility, and get out of facilities that need to get out of condition and operations-wise. So you repurpose Coleman Middle School building currently for the alternate programs in each of those different separate spaces. Build a new middle school on the Coleman site. CMA comes from, goes from an upside-down K eight where there's too many middle school students relative to the elementary to have a real K eight. And you have a real, you have a K eights now, you have a more contiguous K eight, K 12, matriculating through CMA, and there's a bona fide middle school right there built to serve the community. So you have a new middle to serve that entire region, and that, that has some impacts outside of the region down to CMA. You convert Isley to a K eight, which is an operational decision more than a capital decision. But one of the things we are looking to do is to, we heard from many places, is many folks in our meetings, is we, we want regional choice. I don't, if I'm looking for a choice program, I don't, I don't want to look at a school across my street and not have space to go there because kids are being bused from there across town. I want to be able to go, I want regional choice. And so to set this table for that, we're looking at regional K eights across the district. Replace, just south of East High School, replace the Grove Campus B building with a future-ready center, Career Tech. So you've got early childhood, you've got Career Tech, and you've got the rebuilding. And then the fields to Northeast Magnet. And those are the major action items for the northeast quadrant of town. And these will, these are listed explicitly, and Rob will go over them in detail again. But there's enough that I'd rather say it twice than once. In the southeast, right here, rebuild Caldwell on this campus. And in doing, in the process of doing so, you've got a big plot of land and a high, dense pocket of students. And this is begging for a master plan of this site. What is over the long term, how does this, how will this site work? What are the long-term uses of this building, of this site in general? Let's start with rebuilding Caldwell. Jar nine, which you closed in the, in this last round here, repurpose that for the special day programs. Wells, Sowers, Moving, and Bryant, Bryant, moving to Jar nine. That provides economies of scale with this facility that accommodates them actually having their own space, but having those economies of scale, and there's budget in this plan to help repurpose the building to accommodate for that. Building efficiencies where we can in the portfolio that you have. Shifting clockwise to what we called the southwest. Two major actions. One, rebuild Truesdale Middle School on site. We looked at this building a lot and said, well, could you renovate it? You could renovate it, but you're beginning to be left with a building that is not optimal from a design standpoint, from a, from an operation standpoint. You could actually rebuild the physical plant a little smaller, and it would, to meet the standard of the current middle schools as we're planning for, and it would be a educationally adequate facility from a facility standpoint. And the condition is such that that school needs to be rebuilt. So rebuild Truesdale and add the middle school section to Cessna, creating that regional K eight. Cessna is great. It's got a great plot of land. And so that is, when you have that kind of land, build for the future. Now, in what I, my team, call the northwest section of the district, I want to point out here, you see lots of schools in a, in a defined area serving a high-density pocket of students. You have lots of small schools with lots of condition needs, serving a high-density pocket of students. This is where phase step one concentrates a lot of rebuilds. We have three rebuilds in this area. And that is where the consolidations are concentrated to go into those rebuilds once they're done. So we're going to go over all of that, but in the northwest, we are rebuilding Black, we are rebuilding Irving, and we are rebuilding McLean. This creates a triangle in that, in the geography there where those schools are relative to a high-density pocket of students. And that with, around that, to consolidate into those new builds, okay, Pleasant Valley Elementary, Woodland, and then Lowverture is kind of over on the, on the right-hand flank or the eastern flank of that. Lowverture, and we're going to go into what are the proximate schools for all of that. Lowverture is proximate to the rebuild of Irving, as well as the schools that were rebuilt in the last bond in 2011. And then repurposing Bryant for the Dunlap program. And that completes the major cycle as we walk through your district geographically clockwise. We're going to break it down here, as I mentioned, Rob's going to go through everyone in detail and list all of these things, speaking about them in more detail, just because it, again, these are, this is a lot of activity here, and we want to break it down. So step one.
Thank you, David. I also want to bring up at this time, specifically looking at step one is where our focus of our community survey is going. So when we're looking at the detail of this step one and of the plan, we, we're looking for community feedback on this portion of the plan. So following tonight's meeting, there'll be some communication that goes out, so there'll be links to surveys that are available for folks to be able to provide us with some feedback. So look forward to that. That survey will be open from today and then through the day on June 20th. So it's open for about nine to 10 days. But again, very critical feedback that we're looking for, and be able to make any adjustments or what we need to before we come back to you again on the 27th at your board meeting. Okay? So as David mentioned, we're going to break these down a little bit further. So what you have, we're going to, I've got four slides, one for each of the different quadrants or regions, if you will. Similar structure, what's on the left is what currently is set up, and what's on the right is what's being recommended. So as David went through each one of these, we just want to spend a little bit of time breaking these down. Again, I think it's really, really important to mention to all of you that when we come back on the 27th, we're going to provide a sequencing or transitioning, if you will, what buildings might go first, which ones might come next in terms of the sequence of rebuilds so that we know that nobody, no students are moving until a rebuild is finished and complete. So students are moving into a trade-up scenario in all of these situations. So looking at Adams, as David mentioned... So, looking at Adams, as David mentioned, he mentioned some of these different things. Again, it's a building with poor condition, it has a high density of the enrollment, and also supports what could be some future consolidations as well. And then also looking at building a new middle school there to replace Coleman in this area. And then repurposing, as David mentioned, is Coleman. So we're gonna repurpose Coleman for, as David mentioned, some of the day school.
Alternative.
Or, excuse me, alternative programming, excuse me. So Wells, Sowers, Gateway, and Dunbar, I believe are the four that would be. So, again, those programs under one roof, if you will, but schools within a school. So we can really identify some efficiencies, we can also identify how do we, how can these programs work together potentially, under one roof in, for the purpose of the students and for the program itself, okay? Also then David mentioned, looking at Isley becoming a K eight. Expanding the future ready center by, again, rebuilding a facility that's already on East High's campus, which is gonna be really nice, really accessible to those high school students to be able to take advantage of some of the programming that is there as well. And then Chester Lewis Learning Center, looking to build an early childhood center on that particular site. All right, moving to southeast. Southeast, again here, looking at rebuilding Caldwell. It's got high condition needs, it's got some undersized classrooms. And then looking at repurposing Jardine. And here is where we're looking at the day school programs being, again, under one roof. David talked about an investment as part of this plan to really take a look at this building. How do we take this building, renovate it, restructure it in a way that is supportive of the programs that we would put in there, and also making sure that everything flowed the way it needs to flow, and having accesses and exits and entrances, things like that that would make sense for the programs that would be relocated to that location. In southwest, looking at rebuilding Truesdale. Here, there's excess capacity, so again, that building may not need to be as large as it currently is now to accommodate the students and programming and staff. Aging facility with undersized classrooms and undersized support spaces as well. And then looking at an addition to Cessna here, converting that to a K eight. Again, this is an opportunity, we're gonna talk about it at the end, but I think there's a really, really good opportunity for the district to collaborate with the city of Wichita, Parks and Rec Division, to where we can really talk about how do we best serve some of our community, whether it's a, a park program, whether it's a city facility, or it's the school district. We'll talk about that, and actually Kelly's gonna talk a little bit about that here towards the end. And then in the northwest region. Again, looking at rebuilding three elementary schools, Black Elementary, Irving Elementary, and McLean Elementary. And then looking to consolidate, okay, Pleasant Valley, Woodland, and Lowverture. That would be, again, the emphasis, as David mentioned, in this particular area is on elementary schools. And again, we wanna make sure that everyone sees that this is gonna be an area that's gonna be the, what we're gonna wanna really make sure of here is how those transitions and sequences occur in this area, because it is a concentrated area of, of effort that's happening in this particular area. And while we're here as well, Bryant then would be repurposed for the Dunlap program.
So just, this is the area, Irving, Irving is the one school that is landlocked and doesn't allow you to rebuild on a green space while school's in session. The rest allow you to do that. Because of that, and because students were recently moved into Irving, an Irving rebuild will likely be at the end of what we would recommend for this phase of effort. Will allow some new construction to come on to, to, to the plate. That provides more swing space opportunities for you, so that students can continue to be educated in a school and not, you know, you don't want portable cities set up everywhere. It's a sunk cost, it's not great while the school's in, in session. So that was one we're looking at phasing to minimize the transition impacts of a, of a rebuild.
So looking at district alternative, support spaces as well as administrative facilities, this is kind of a, a list of those, we don't have any cool maps to show you on this one, sorry. Just a list of those actions that we're taking a look at in terms of step one. So, when we talk about there being 11 consolidations as part of step one, it's really less than half of those are, are your traditional schools that we're taking a look at. What we're trying to do, and looking at this as an opportunity, if you will, at the district level to be able to bring some programs together that make sense, while also trying to have students move into a situation where, again, a trade-up in a, in a building to where those programs are located. And maybe moving out of locations aren't, are not quite as, you know, as efficient, number one, but also don't really fit the needs of those particular programs like we can, like we can make them in some situations. So, looking here on the administrative side of things, Dunbar, looking at that particular support facility being relocated. As well as the ISC, looking at that being relocated to Coleman as part of that repurposing of that particular facility, or building, excuse me. Then looking at, then some of the day school and alternative programs, we've talked about this, but here again, we have them broke down for you so that you can see where are some of these programs potentially, you know, where we would recommend that they be relocated. Again, I think when we look at Coleman and we look at Jardine, those are buildings where we would want to invest in some of those, so that when we're relocating those students, we're relocating that staff, we're looking at efficiencies, but we're also looking at a facility that fits their needs and supports the programs, not just, let's just relocate them. So, again, that's part of this plan as well. We talked about Chester Lewis, that site having a new early childhood center located on it. The addition of the future ready center, we talked about being on East Campus, and repurposing Bryant as well. That would be, we'd be looking at repurposing Bryant to relocate Dunlap to that location. One of the things David mentioned to you early on, something we took a look at, and we've mentioned many times, but we wanna make sure it's really, it's really important for you as a board to know, when do these things occur? I mean, are we talking about like 2025, 2027? When does all this stuff occur, and in what sequence, if you will? So what we wanted to try and do, and again, what we will do is work through more of that specifics before we come back to you on the 27th, but we're just letting you know that not everything's gonna be able to happen in one foul swoop. But what you'll see here on the right-hand side of this particular slide, is we looked at in particular, those four schools in the northwest that we are recommending for consolidation. What are the schools that are closest to them in proximity today? So when we look at that for okay, what's closest is Black and McLean. So for those students, potentially, they may attend those two schools. It's what's closest to them now, okay? And both of those schools are looking at, again, we're looking at a trade-up scenario for students at okay. Both of those schools are recommended for rebuild in step one. So those students would be relocated to a brand-new building if they attended either Black or McLean. In Lowverture, again, those schools that are in the closest proximity are Irving, Spate, or Mueller. And, again, Irving being rebuilt, Spate and Mueller, those two buildings were actually new as a result of the last bond here within the district. So those, again, looking at those trade-up scenarios for kids. At Woodland, we're looking at Irving and McLean, as we talked about, being rebuilt in step one. And then Riverside and Cloud are two other buildings that are in closest proximity. Again, we don't know where students might end up for sure, but what we do know is that when we're looking at the closest schools in relation to where they're currently attending now, we wanted to make sure those were listed here. And for Pleasant Valley Elementary is Cloud, Ortiz, McLean, and Earhart. Again, looking at how are, what do those trade-up scenarios look like for those students potentially? Yeah, so what we have to, I think one thing I wanna point out on this slide is the last bullet there, is that more than likely, some type of redistricting will occur once this plan is it's putting, be putting, is put in place and implemented. So, again, what we wanna identify here is what are the schools that are in closest proximity for potentially students to attend if, when they're, when these other schools are consolidated? But again, we won't know for sure, but those families and students will be informed of those decisions where they will attend officially once the redistricting process is taken in place.
All right. This is where our team mapped all students to all schools and looked at the impact using that same closest school analysis. So, okay elementary school, the closest schools are Black and McLean, scheduled for rebuild. On average, the in-district students to okay are on average 1.79 miles from the school. The difference is now 1.9 and 2.44 for an average of 2.17. Lowverture, students average 2.6 miles to the school who are in district around the area. Mueller, Irving, Spate are the closest ones. The new average among those is 2.82. So, this was a done after the fact as a way to proof out to ourselves, did we do what we said we were gonna do, and to make sure that we're not impeding accessibility to schools through this process? We took great pains for that, and this evidences the fact that we, we were on mark. The average distance, additional distance is less than a mile. Point two-two to point eight-eight. This is very important to us, because we play with a lot of data. But kids aren't data points, teachers aren't data points, communities don't fit on spreadsheets. We use a lot of data because we care about kids and teachers and communities. This work can make a very positive difference in your district over time. We've seen it. It's why we keep doing it. It's a niche business. I joked with principals this morning, no 11-year-old kid goes, I wanna be a facility planner when I grow up. But life happens, you stumble into something, and you find out how you can make a difference. When we did the community meetings and focus groups, we invited a former client of ours to come and present. She now retired, she's retired CFO of Arlington Independent School District in Arlington, Texas. They're a little larger than you all, but not too much larger. And we did two series of bond programs, master plans with them. And in it, lo and behold, they had surplus middle school capacity, they had surplus elementary capacity, and they had a bunch of alternative and special education programs spread to the winds in different corners of different buildings that were less than adequate for the program. And over the course of two different bond programs, two different master plans, did the same data analyses, worked through the same types of questions. And at the end, they have rebuilt their district to meet their community's needs, and it's working. It's serving the kids. The schools are as close or closer to the, to the kids that they've been serving, and now they're just in sustainable, adequate buildings that they can afford to, to, to resource at their, at their level of quality standard. And that's, if you'll indulge me for a second, that is what we are trying to do. We go back to a financially sustainable portfolio of schools, meaning, we're not giving you a wish list of everything that you could potentially fix at your schools but could never afford, and once you did fix them, would put you in a bad operating position. That's not a plan. We're looking at what can you afford sustain over the long period of time that's proximate to your students on sites that you can rebuild to serve you for the next hundred years, at your level of quality. And that's hard work with, with communities to do for you all. Our work is easier. Implementing it over time, it's worth it. It makes a difference. When we, we have the data, we match it up, we're faithful to that, and we're faithful to our goal, you can do this. The fact that you can bond a substantial chuckle, nearly a quarter of the entire master plan without a tax increase, is a gift that not a lot of districts have. And so I am excited for you. I, I've seen this on the back end, I'm excited for what can happen with this work. We're looking forward to the feedback, it is an ongoing conversation, and it can change things for the better for your communities. I, I believe that to my core, otherwise I wouldn't be doing this still. Kelly.
Do you wanna go to the next one?
I jumped the gun, but I got a little, I got a little excited, sorry.
Well, it's, yeah, it's definitely better information than I'm gonna give you, so. But in terms of the project timeline, looking up here, we're looking at where we're at June 10th. I, I shared with you that we would follow this up with a, a second survey, so that's coming next. And then we'll be back in front of you on June 27th with, again, looking forward to the feedback David shared, making some adjustments as needed, and being able to share some more identified specific information for you. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
All right. Thank you, guys. It's always awkward when I try to look at both sides of the table all at once, so I thought it'd be easier if I just came up here. First off, the timeline, I'm gonna skip back to it. We started this journey in October, with you guys approving the hire, the bid process, the request for quotes for doing a master plan. And I just wanna personally thank you guys, David and Rob. Made a lot of trips to Wichita, more trips than I think they expected to take. We have done an extreme number of community feedback, thanks to Jeff and his team, thanks to Luke and everybody. It's exciting that we're here, right? We're here with actual stuff, and we're at the end of the plan. I wanna talk real quick about the numbers, and then I wanna talk about the vision. You know, we're talking about an investment, you know, $450 million is, is a huge sum of money. And, I think as we think about it, as I think about it, I'm a product of public schools, I think a lot of us have attended or have been a product of public schools. I would imagine pretty much everyone in here at some point has benefited from an investment that someone has made in you and your future. So when we think of our, of our taxes and the mill rate, and we've, we need to make sure we give credit where credit's due, we've dropped the mill rate 13 years in a row with a small, small increase this last year. We have one of the lowest mill rates in this, in the county for a school district. But when that property tax comes due, a lot of people see it as a bill, that's a bill we're gonna pay. But I think for most of us, if we think of our 401K, you know, when I, when I put money aside for my retirement, that's not a bill I pay, that's an investment that I'm making, right? Your tax burden is an investment in our kids, it's an investment in the future. People, and the reason I'm here today is because people invested in me. And that's what we do in public education, every kid, we invest in every kid. We don't leave anyone behind. We don't leave anyone behind, we don't tell anyone they can't come, it doesn't matter what country they're from, it doesn't matter what their disability is, it doesn't matter what race they are. We teach them all and we take them all, and that is an investment that I think tonight, when you rewind back to our Good Muse item, look at the investment that's paid off in our community and changing the, literally changing the trajectory of kids. So, thinking about investment gets me excited. But what are we here for? What is, what is USD 259, right? What are we? We're an institution of learning. Academic outcomes, educational outcomes, student outcomes, that's what we should be focused on, right? So what does all of this have to do with that? And I think the visuals are, are part of that story. I think when you look at this visual and you think of the students of today, and the diverse needs of our students, and the needs that teachers have when it comes to flexibility, our facilities can support student outcomes, much more so than they do. Smaller classrooms where all you can do is put your desks in rows, classrooms that are ill-lit, ill-cooled and heated, those aren't conducive to, to, to learning. And when you look at a, look at a vision like this, I think you can see that different kinds of learners can really learn from here. Some of us here might have struggled in school, we might have needed more movement, more application, more hands-on. The learning spaces can support that, and that is part of the vision of what we want to lean into, all across the district, right? All across the district. But I feel like we can really meet kids' needs and all sorts of learning needs in facilities such as this. I'm not sure that I've told the board this, but I did a thing a couple weeks ago, and sent, in my all-staff email, sent a one-question survey to staff, all staff, and said, "What's your best idea for facilities? Your best one idea? What, what's your idea? What, what do you think we should do?" Some staff didn't read very well, and they gave me a whole bunch of ideas, but that was cool, right? That was cool. So, so I'm going to share some of that in terms of the plan, because this isn't just a plan that's been made in isolation, it's been made with a lot of feedback. So, I got to flip back and forth between my notes, but one of the things that we'll talk about as we continue to move forward is the programming that happens in the, in the classrooms. And one of the questions that's probably swirling for some parents is, you know, I'm at this, this school, and the school has a particular magnet theme, but now the school's being either rebuilt, or changed, or consolidated, what's going to happen to the magnet theme? And I think we must continue to look at meeting the needs of the parents, meeting the needs of the students, and meeting the needs of the community in terms of our educational opportunities, right? We cannot say, "One size fits all, if you want to come, you're going to be in a classroom of, of 22 other kids, and you're going to sit and get, and it's going to be a lecture, and if you don't like it, you can go, you know, go, just leave," right? We need to be adaptive, and we need to be more flexible when it comes to that. So Caitlin from Pleasant Valley Elementary had a, had a cool idea about a, the premise of the idea was more options for parents, but about what are called forest kindergartens, where it's kind of free play and very adaptive for, for kids and families. It's a, it's a model that isn't very pervasive in Kansas, to be honest. And not necessarily something we're going to do, but the fact that she threw out an idea that stretches our thinking, allows us to be flexible, allows us to think, is this something our community would value? It was something I had, I had to research because I had never heard of it before. But I think those are the kinds of things, as we engage staff, what do you, what do your kids need that's different that we don't have when it comes to what we're offering for our spaces, for, for educational chances? I think we want spaces where learners can flourish, right? And that doesn't mean all the spaces look the same. We talked at our, at our, about the, during the guardrails part of the master planning, about having some things that are similar in every school, but some things that are different and differentiated. And I think learners flourishing in different environments is essential. But I want to harp back to something I said earlier today, and that's learning for every student. Every single student in the district needs committed to, and we need to push forward. So, we've been talking about educational adequacy, we talked about that at, at our workshop. And part of that, you know, question is, you know, why, some of these elementary schools that we have, size-wise, we like, they're, they're smaller. Why are we suggesting, why are these guys suggesting bigger elementary schools? And part of that is that we can, we can staff them equitably, so that kids have all, access to all different sorts of resources that they might need. Mental health resources, intervention resources, behavioral resources, all of those could be equitably staffed at every elementary school. What we have now, where at some smaller schools, they get a, a .2 counselor and a .6 FTE social worker, I'm making that up, but they, they don't have, all the staffing isn't the same, it isn't equitable across all the districts. So if we're able to create this model and move this forward, we can create educational adequacy all across the district. Also increasing equitable access. So, you know, David mentioned the triangle and the one quadrant of town, that we would, you know, rebuild these, these three, sorry, these three schools, you know, to, to handle a certain number of kids. What we would like to do as staff, moving forward, is to be able, be able to offer programs that many kids need at every elementary school and at every middle school. So instead of busing students across town to get to an ESOL program, or having parents opt out of the resources because they don't want to leave school, we offer those opportunities at every school. We offer a mixed abilities program at every school, for example. That'll take time to phase in, but that, that's, that's a, a way that we can approach this to get adequacy, so kids can stay closer to home, which I think is an ultimate benefit for, for parents and families. I had two staff, and, and there was more than these, but I picked out some of the, some of the good ones. One was a staff member, Wilbur, that's, that voiced, you know, their best idea was enough and extra support, support staff, offices, spaces to meet with students to support their social, emotional, behavioral wellbeing, right? So that's an idea from staff that we need enough support to go around. And then I know this came up during school closure, so I wanted to lift this one up too. Every student, every school that remains open should have a gym and a multipurpose room. My school and many others use our gym for PE, breakfast, lunch, music program, school assemblies, it would make it easier for scheduling to have two spaces for large events. So, that isn't just something that we say, that's staff members and their lived experience that they feel that way. So, equitable educational adequacy, we could, we could envision that all the way across the district. Want to talk a minute about our young ones and our old ones. So, pre-K. The, the site of Chester Lewis, which is on, off Hillside, most of us know, kind of by WSU, 17th and Hillside. To put an early childhood center there, there's a state-of-the-art facility that can support our, our students with disabilities from Little Elementary, or Little Early Childhood Center, and students from that neighborhood who have trouble accessing high-quality pre-K. By housing parents as teachers there in the community for that resource, to, to give people, in one of the poorest zip codes in the state of Kansas, clear access to early childhood. We know, research tells us for decades, dollars spent in early childhood are dollars well-spent, right? We know that that pays off for educational outcomes. If a student walks into kindergarten and they're already behind, there's a very slim chance they get caught up by their senior year. If they're, if they're ready for kindergarten on day one, it makes a huge difference. It can truly, truly change the outcomes for our kids, if we invest early and put this resource right there in the community. And then bringing back shop class, that's the one I heard a lot in the CTU world, "Why don't we bring back shop class?" We're listening, community, we're hearing you, we want a future-ready center for trades. We've proven the future-ready center model works, we've proven that we can generate students that are ready for the workforce in healthcare and in manufacturing. This would not remove construction classes out of current high schools, but it would be capstone classes, it would be HVAC training, it would be plumbing technicians, it would be electrical. There's a lot of excitement from industry and community about this resource. We need it. If you've ever tried to hire a plumber, we, there, sometimes they're hard to find. This is a, a critical way for kids to become future-ready, not necessarily go straight into the workforce, but if they want to, they can have a really good job right out of high school. So, the pre-K idea came from Teresa at OK Elementary. She suggested another large concentrated early childhood center in addition to Little, where the pre-K is housed and lived, spreading around schools. Pooling resources, concentrating trainings, ability to have floater paras, things I wouldn't have even known were issues because I don't live that experience. We hear it from the staff, right? We hear it from them, and that was her idea. Dustin, who works at the SSC, is the one that sent me an idea. He said, "We need an SSC tech ed trades program. Trades education is where we can get the most bang for our buck. We've seen it firsthand, how excited the students get to work, who are getting to work with cabinets. If the program is supported to its fullest potential, it has a chance to get enrollment up." That comes from a non-teacher, right? Someone who works at, for Luke at the SSC. "Our vision is to have impactful education. We want innovative and impactful education, and as I said earlier, learners flourish in environments that meet kids' needs." So, another piece of this that, that David and Rob mentioned is a focus on K8s. You, you heard, you know, Isley and Cessna, that is a, a popular thing we've heard from community all throughout the year, and even, even from some of you all. Laura at AMAC and Kristen at IST, and a teacher from McCollum, all shared essentially just more K8s, right? That was their, their best idea, was more K8s. So we had several, several people mention that, as far as what they feel like we should focus on. Our alternative school programs, one of the things that I think is important to note, you know, as we were evaluating middle schools, we looked at the square footage of the classrooms, and some of our middle schools had a number of, of classrooms that were below 700 square feet. That makes them good locations for some of the specialized programs that have very small class size, such as Gateway, such as Chester Lewis, such as some of those things. So, we're being strategic in how we continue to move forward and use our facilities. And the bottom line, the one thing I wanted to share at the end, overall, this reduces our footprint pretty substantially as a district. There's four elementary schools that were, were, that are on the, on the draft for consolidation, five other alternative schools, and then two, two of five administrative centers. So we have five administrative centers, this would cut that 40% if we closed Dunbar and ISC, and relocate, relocate those programs somewhere else. And a teacher at Bostic, and this was shared frequently, but this was probably the best summary, her best idea, you know, reduce the number of people at AMAC, move those at ISC to AMAC, which is, we've heard that feedback over and over, kind of throughout, ever since January, about AMAC, and then what we can do with these other buildings. So, glad to see that was part of their suggested master plan. So, last but not least, two things, and, and then we'll open it up for questions for probably these guys. USD259.org/plan, all of the, the presentation, the, the recorded presentation, once we get that uploaded, will be there, and that's where we'll house the information from tonight. And I am excited to, to launch our survey tomorrow and to hear from the community. So I, I would encourage all of us to, to respond and fill it out. We really hope to hear not just things we don't like, but what are the things we do like about this plan? This is just a draft, we'll come back in June and, and tweak it with your feedback, community feedback, staff feedback. We hope to hear from, from all sorts of different stakeholders as far as what they think about this. But I think there's a lot to like here, and looking forward, an exciting vision for, for our district, so. That's all I had. So, time for questions, go ahead, Stan.
Thank you, Kelly. If the bor, board will indulge me, I'm going to try to do a little recap of this information, and you can correct me if I've got any major facts incorrect.
We'll do my best.
Okay. Well, I'm going to try my best, too. The, the bad news is, we are built for the baby boomer generation, and we're carrying too many buildings with too many physical needs. The good news is, we can create a balanced approach without a mill increase on the first stage that would increase our sustainability, that meets our strategic plan. And the goal is to trade up all facilities that are rebuilt and repurposed, trade up for our students, and updating our classrooms. Most of the rebuilds on the site will be on, excuse me, most of the rebuilds will be onsite except for the one at Irving.
Correct.
The majority of the consolidation is in the non-traditional elementary schools, but the consolidations don't happen till after the rebuilds are done. The additions that we get are an early childhood center, another future-ready center for the trades, and the rebuilds will be at Adams, Caldwell, Truesdale, Black, Irving, McLean, Cessna, which is more of a addition.
Cessna is addition of, of the middle school.
Right. And, and after, and again, another thing that we get from this would be a K through eight in each quadrant of, of our school district. A lot of these schools that are mentioned for rebuilds and for, again, consolidations after the rebuilds, but the, would be, saves us on deferred maintenance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any estimate of what are, if we, if we just took this plan right here, what, what, where are we going to sit on deferred maintenance when that's completed?
Pull it up in two seconds on my other computer, but just to give you a perspective, we identified about 1.2, 1.3 billion in deferred maintenance.
Right.
The plan in total, if you, if you had an underwriter for $2 billion, the, the rebuilding cost is almost the exact same figure. It's just re, instead of spreading that money little bit by little bit, at all the little problems everywhere, it's rebuilding newer and fewer on those schools. Of the 11 schools identified, we can get you the total deferred maintenance savings, but it's significant, it's in the hundreds of millions.
Is my recap fairly?
Recap is fair, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure I had a foundation on where to build this discussion from here on.
Yeah, I would say that the nuanced addition is, there's the, I didn't hear, but maybe you said the, the new middle school on the Coleman site. So that's a comprehensive middle school on the Coleman site, so you have two campuses on there. And then the, the repurposing of Jardine and Coleman for the special and alternative programs allows you a, a significant amount of efficiencies at those programs, where you can co-how, co-house staff that serve the populations, getting out of lots of little buildings desperately that are in, put in poor condition.
I did, I did write something about the alternative that I skipped over.
And the middle schools, at, at risk of elaborating a little bit too much, but the middle schools are great for that because they're larger, and you can spread out in them, and so you do have a surplus of middle schools, let's use that to your advantage.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy?
Am I on?
No.
Yes, you are now.
Okay. Great presentation. Have you ever seen the map of Greenwich Village in New York City? This is how my mind is doing with your presentation, so this is not my forte. So I do have some questions. What is the website to keep track of everything? Is that what you said? It was the slash plan?
Yes.
Okay. I got that answer.
And also info@USD259.net, any email questions to that also.
Okay. With the rebuilding, will all of the buildings look the same?
So, that's a great design question. They will be based on the same standards.
Well, he's right there.
So Jeff could talk about that better than I can, so yeah.
Thank you.
The quick answer is no. I mean, we would, each site is going to be different, so it may have to be modified based upon the site restraints. But additionally, I think the next phase of design, we'd want to meet with the communities that those are in, and meet with them and see what architectural features speak to their community and it fits with. fits within their community. So no, they wouldn't all look the same. They may have the same similar footprint, but architecturally, we would want to address those individually per the community.
Custom made?
Correct.
Okay. Bear with me. I'm going through my. So we're talking about four section elementary schools.
Three and four.
Okay. That is an awesome idea. I'm a substitute teacher and there is a big difference in walking into schools that have three or four sections as opposed to one or two. And Kelly, you and I have talked about that. A lot of this reminds me of Oaklawn and Cooper down in Derby. And I will have to say that an environment of teaching does make a difference in the learning experience as well as the teaching experience. And if it can look like a Cooper or an Oaklawn, I'm excited. So when you're talking about rebuilding, does that mean like demoing the building down and starting from scratch?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And if we're going to consider growing our K through eight concept, I briefly mentioned this to you earlier today, we've got middle schools already up. The feeder elementary schools, can't we feed them into it and convert it to a K through eight in that middle school?
In some cases, yes. The standard capacity that we're looking at for a logical K eight is 900, 600 at the elementary, 300 at the middle. And some of your middle schools accommodate that. When looking at the the full long-range plan, you could absolutely look at placements for K eight, future K eights in your middles because you do have a surplus of middles. That does make some sense.
Right.
For this step, because of the sort of the, you got, neither the middles, they got a lot of needs. The the highest point of needs is way too many elementary seats and way too much in too much poor condition, many of them so small that you can, as you as you observed, a one-section elementary school, just you're not going to resourcing that. You can resource one of them like that, but not 20 of them like that. And so we've concentrated this initial tranche of funding on that, those elementaries.
Okay. And when this first stage is done and we've exhausted the bond of $450, I'm sorry, 400, you know, what we're talking, right?
Just a few zeros, but yeah.
Just a few pennies off. What's next? Another bond issue?
So.
Are we going to wait to pay off this and then ask for more?
So I'd like to speak to that. You know, we, these guys met with a group of principals in all the quadrants this morning. And one of the things I mentioned to them was, I think we feel really good with a data-driven approach for this five-to-seven-year plan, hopefully closer to five. So much can change in the next five years. You just think of the, outside of education, outside of what they do in Topeka, think of our our business landscape in Wichita and how possible tumultuous that could be. So much is up in the air. I don't think we want to commit to, one, five years, you know, doggone it, we're going to do this. I think we continue to evaluate as even as we're going through this process, are the heat maps staying the same as enrollment being driven is decreasing? You know, what's happening with all of that? And then, you know, continue to refine and look at what comes next. These guys have kind of an overall look at what they think our right size is, but this is just step one. And I think we we monitor enrollment trends and see where where that takes us over the next five years. So.
Okay. So the what we were given today, tonight, this is just step one.
Right.
Okay. So you, thank you for sparing me of giving me the whole plan. I'm looking at my questions before I turn this over to the next board member. Thank you for your patience.
No worries.
I think I've, I think I've asked them all. That was the bond issue. What do we do when that money's up? And so stage one, will we be able to get, okay, when you go on a trip, you get an itinerary, step by step by step?
Yes. So once we receive the feedback.
I need.
Yes, ma'am. Once we receive the the next round of feedback on these options, the next exercise for our team to do is to sequence the first step of projects broadly. First do this, then do this, then they just basically looking at, you know, capacity within the local contractor field to look at how to sequence things logically, you know, six months for design and then 18 months to 24 for the for the building. And you just mentioned Irving is the one school that you we can't really flip the site on. And so we'll build out that sequencing there on what makes sense and you'll see it. That's why it's a five-year plan and most five-year plans spill like a little bit into year six or something, but you'll see that laid out for you.
Okay. And one more for Kelly. If we're going to request a bond issue, is there a timeframe that the board has to vote on that to get it on the ballot for November?
Yes. Yeah, there is a timeframe. If we were going to go for a November vote, it would be August, I think. I think step one really, well, step one of step one is.
Get the money.
Well, the next meeting, right? To really have a firm plan with from from stakeholders and from community and us, this is what we believe we need to do. And then I think we make a decision as far as timetable and if we if we go forward, I mean, we're kind of, you know, assuming you all are going to move forward with a bond, but that may not be the case. You may say, not right now. Now's not the time. We want to see other options. So that I think that should come after we have a firm plan.
Okay. So as you just talked about, the step by step by step for this, at the next meeting when you bring the final.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way you can like make it very easy to understand for people like me?
Oh, yes, ma'am. The PowerPoint version of this will be the higher level. It is not all of the nitty-gritty, what soil testing and all that kind of.
Right.
Really engineering stuff will spare you that.
Yes.
It's more of start design, finish design, break ground, finish.
Okay.
Right? And we'll look at that across the projects over the the sequence.
I know you all have done a lot of work on this. I can see it and I don't even understand a whole lot of it. So my cohort here is going to take me one day and we're going to go through this and word by word. Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Hazel?
Very simple question, and it has to do with Irving.
Yes, ma'am.
And you said that it was the only school that you can do onsite. What would happen to the students? What would happen to that population while that build was going on?
The most typical strategy that we look at is putting it towards the backside of the construction phases. So that opens up schools that are vacated. So we said, you know, the trade-up scenario, kids stay in their home school until they move to the new one, right? Well, when they move to the new one, the eventual idea is, as Kelly's talked about before, is working over the the months to years to come to figure out what's the the long-term use for that asset, for that building in the community. Before any next phase of that asset, that school that's vacated would be that those are great homes for like Irving population to temporarily move in while that school is just rebuilt. So you you just, they're staying in a school. We look for an adjacent school that eventually have some other purpose, but you can still use it for now. And that's, that's the short answer.
Okay. So the Irving students would relocate twice. They would move to temporary school and then they would move back to the.
They're, they're, the rebuilt school will be onsite on Irving. And so it would be pickup, move to a temporary site while the school's being demolished, rebuilt, and then pick up and move right back.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No, no, I was just scratching my eyes.
Julie?
Maybe I'm the only person that thinks this is important, but I almost think it's more important for us to have a workshop about this plan than it is to have a workshop about park. That, you know, it's pretty complex and I personally, before we vote on it, would like to know exactly what I'm voting on. I mean, I'm I'm assuming from this presentation that every place that has a consolidate, that means that building's going to be shut down. But I mean, see, I'm making some assumptions because we just have, you know, like a little bit of information. And I'm and I'm making the assumption that every place that says rebuild, we're building a totally new building and then demolishing the one that's there.
That is correct. So a rebuild is a complete new to this, you know, knock it down, build it back up. A renovate is keep the structural elements of the plan.
Okay. You don't have any renovates.
We do not have renovates in that.
Okay.
Again, because of the the concentration and need of surplus elementary schools in poor condition, coupled with the commitment that we want these options, we're committed to these options being a trade-up scenario for kids, and the fact that so many of these elementary schools are structurally too small, the one-two sections and that kind of thing, that logically leads us to prioritizing rebuilding elementary schools in step one.
Okay. So I was correct in saying everything that says rebuild is we're building a totally new building.
Yes, ma'am.
And then demolishing the current one.
Yes, ma'am.
And was I correct in saying that every place we have a consolidate, that building is going to be shut down and the kids in it are going to be relocated to probably one of these other rebuilds?
That is correct.
Okay.
And what the all, what the long time use is for that that facility that is vacated is something that is to be determined exactly in on, that is a process unto itself.
Sure.
We could not do its due diligence in this.
Yeah. I mean, we've already got six buildings that we're considering that about.
Yeah, that's a process. Right.
Exactly. Okay. I mean, that that at least answers some of my questions, but anyway, I guess I would propose a workshop.
Yeah, I, there's definitely going to be a workshop on this.
Okay.
And I totally agree with with what Julie is saying and definitely coming from her expertise as an architect. I think that that's an excellent way for us to continue to not only dissect, but to what I would call marinate on what it is that we have here, because that's how I'm going to generate additional questions. I do have a few questions right now. The first one is Irving versus Adams. Let me make sure that I'm understanding. I think you stated that Adams, it's on a small lot or it's it's on a very small enclosed lot. I know exactly where it's at. But yeah, we're going to rebuild there.
Yes, ma'am. So.
But but that's Irving versus Adams is my question. If we could do it there, I mean, and that's just total urban. I mean, it's right there on the street.
It is.
There's no land around.
No. No. And so we work in the realm of the practical as we look at it. Given where the students are.
Mm-hmm.
If we were to not have a school there, that would leave a hole. There is not an immediate adjacent capacity for that dense or that those pockets of population which are dense in those areas. And so because of that, we work with less than ideal sites because that's where the kids are. In other areas where we have redundant schools serving the same population or population centers, it's a different strategy. But when there's not, we work with what we have. To that effect, we are looking at a park adjacent to Adams, which is a stone's throw, that is larger as a possibility for a rebuild with a little more green space, still in the same geography. That is TBD, but that is something we're exploring.
Okay. So that's not a done deal.
No, ma'am.
Okay. So that's something that we're, we were, we experienced here. However, there are contingencies.
Yes, ma'am.
And that is something that we would want to continue to discuss.
Yes, ma'am.
Learn in a workshop.
In a workshop.
So I would throw out, too, there is, Jeff's team has a a single-floor model and then a two-story model. So if we if we know some of these sites are smaller, you know, you build up instead of spreading out.
Sure.
Drop-off and pickup is still an issue, right? There's still issues with the site, but the current Adams site could work.
Yeah.
If if need be. So we just have to build a two-story school.
Drop-off and pick up, pickup is atrocious.
It is.
I mean, absolutely atrocious.
Yeah. And Irving is on the other side, but it's also being on the main thoroughfare is challenging itself.
Yep. Okay. So another question has to do with, let me make sure that I'm understanding. Let's take Loeuvitcher and how it is that it's in the northwest quadrant. However, it's definitely east of the northwest.
It's in the gray zone.
Quadrant. And when the new site is being built, not for Loeuvitcher, but when the consolidation is actually going to happen, Loeuvitcher is but one of the buildings that is going to be consolidated into it. It will, those students will be going, able to go to Irving, be able to go to Mueller or Spate, I think is what I saw.
Yes, ma'am.
So and and that's only during the course of this new consolidated building that's going to be built. Is that our?
Yes, ma'am. So first and shoot would be Irving being rebuilt. And because that is likely towards the end of this next step, this would, this would, of course, Loeuvitcher consolidation would then follow that. So Loeuvitcher would be at the tail end following the Irving build. Spate and Mueller being schools built in the 11 timeframe. So those are two of your newer schools. And so this one, we were comfortable with the accessibility standpoint in terms of location as well as the trade-up because you've either got an 11 build or a brand-new build.
Right. But but back to the students that are in that northwest quadrant, is it an automatic that they're going to go to the new Irving consolidated site? Or are they, can they still go to Mueller or Spate, which is, Spate's the closest, actually?
So that's, that is a good question. And that is getting into the specifics of a redistricting process, which much like sort of the the repurposing of vacated buildings is a process unto itself. In, because we knew we couldn't give that answer right now, way premature for us to do it, and that's, you know, Fabiana team working on that later, we picked where the next, the closest schools are. It will likely be these schools because these are the immediately proximate schools serving the same configuration. Where the boundary draw lines are drawn within that is to be determined, but it will be at these schools.
Final question has to do with Little Early Childhood Learning Center. What we're proposing to do is rebuild the current site, which is Chester I. Lewis. So we're going to tear that building down, rebuild from the ground. It will solely house pre-K and early childhood. Who else will be there?
Not necessarily solely. Parents as teachers. Some of our stuff at Dunbar would make a lot of sense to be relocated there, maybe MES. That that we don't know yet as far as who all would be there. But I think that is a perfect opportunity for some community school type partnerships.
Yeah.
Right? To have some available resources there onsite. And tearing down current Chester Lewis, I'm not, that would be a question for them. There's enough land there. I think we could build adjacent to or whatever. And I don't know what the plan is for the site as far as that final decision goes, but.
We just know that the site, the site was a good location for the.
Oh, okay. So Chester, Chester I. Lewis. But I thought I saw Chester I. Lewis going over to the, where Coleman is.
Right. We would move the program.
Move the program, but potentially leave the building.
Well, I don't, I just, I don't know.
You would very likely tear down the Chester Lewis building when you do this and then build a brand-new early childhood center on that site. Yeah, FCI is through the roof.
Yeah.
Quite literally, in that sense.
I'm familiar with. Okay. I think, I think those are the questions that I have right now. But yes, I'm looking forward to an actual workshop.
Thank you for your presentation tonight. With the model schools that you've had, and we talked about the classroom sizes, how would that compare us to surrounding districts?
The model that we're creating, I couldn't give. The model that we're creating, I, I couldn't give you a quantifiable answer from the podium tonight on that, but I can tell you that the specifications that Jeff and team worked on in terms of school class sizes and the diversity of learning environments like the extended learning areas and the gyms and cafeteras, that is state-of-the-art programming. And, and you're, you're going to have, this is a thoroughly modern school. I would distinguish it from an experimentally modern school, which it is not. It is not, is not a sort of a bleeding-edge design, which we toyed with unsuccessfully in the seventies, right? With classrooms without walls. This is, what I would see is meets the basis, the basics of truly thoughtful 21st century school design, which is a diverse array of classrooms sized appropriately to their function, adjacent to each other in a functional way with appropriate transparencies, but acoustic separation, and designed with the appropriate furniture, fixture and equipment. So those are my four criteria for defining a, a solid school design and this meets those.
And with the larger class sizes, one of the, one of the top questions that I hear a lot from teachers especially is, does that mean we're going to increase class size? Are we going to put more student bodies in those larger classrooms?
Not at all, not at all. What we're talking about is giving those bodies more elbow room. You're, the, a larger, like a four-section school, does not mean larger class sizes. It means more classes rooms. And, and in fact, you know, the opposite may be true is that over time, if there are not structural consolidations, class sizes would have to go up because of budget pressure. And so this is actually, the class sizes do not change. What we're looking at is you want 36-plus square foot per student in a room to allow for multimodal instruction, and that's what this does.
Thank you. The, the next question that is top of mind often when I talk to people is about transportation costs. Could you speak to that?
Sure. Much like this will, the specifics of any transportation fan, plan would follow the specifics of a redistricting plan. However, I can tell you this, fewer schools, we're moving in that fewer and newer strategy. You have less pickups, less drop-offs, but again, as you saw in the proximity maps, we are not leaving big gaps in communities. You know, we're, we're keeping things pretty tight. So this can, is not going to save all of your transportation problems, but it will create more efficiencies for you on transportation as well as general operations.
Thank you. And what would happen, we've talked about passing a bond and that is really up to the voters.
It is.
What happens if a bond does not pass?
To be truthful, you try your dangest to pass the next one. Because you are not getting out of your present circumstance without one or two or three in the coming decades. The scale of the need that you have in the backlog of conditions in the buildings that are not a fit to either your conditions, your classroom adequacy, or your budgetary needs is such that you are not going to exit that in a, in a meaningful way without capital investment. Because of that, we believe that it is the best strategy for you all to go for a bond that is not a tax increase to start with. If you could write a $2 billion check, write, somebody writes a $2 billion check, fantastic. You can't do that. You can go forward and get a substantial chunk of work done at no tax increase and the proof will be in the pudding for your community. Here's what we said we're going to do. We did it. It's working. Now let's talk about the next step. And as to Kelly's point, that next step, we have, we mapped out a draft for what that could look like now, but the best practice for you all is to revisit that four to five years from now as the first phase, step is coming to its conclusion and to look to that next five years, make a plan according to those conditions financially and otherwise at the time, and then make your plan at that time.
Okay, thank you very much. Kelly, I appreciate you to cheer on your vision for the larger class sizes, kind of the, the learning environment and, and hitting on different students learn in different ways. And so if you'll indulge me, if I can answer your question that you put out to staff, like what's your biggest facility idea? Mine would be have, to have something that focuses on students with dyslexia. Like, I've never shared this publicly, but I am, I, I have dyslexia. I kind of suffered through it through school and it was, it was a huge barrier. It was a huge battle for me. The sit-and-get learning style did not suit me well. I needed to move around. I needed to, to have more hands-on experience, which is probably why I went into construction, very hands-on. And so, so my big, big idea would be to have something for public education that would be something similar to the Fundamental Learning Center that has unique learning environments for students that are just like me. And we know from statistics that there's about 20% of the population who learns very similar to the way I do. And to have that different style learning environment, I think would, would suit our population in a, in a very impactful and positive way for the future. So, thank you.
Yep, great idea. I, I didn't, I should have asked the seven of you what your best idea was.
Kathy?
So if this board agrees to this long-term master plan, I probably will not be here 10 years from now, not on the earth, but on the board. Is there going to be some sort of a contract where a new board cannot come in and say, we don't want to do this? Or it, once we vote on it, it's there and for the long term? I mean, boards are going to change and my fear would be is that this current board has invested the time and the energy to learn about this. You have, we're ready to go through stage one. We're ready to go through stage two. Well, stage three, there's new seven people here who don't like this idea. Can we get this to where if this is what we want to do, this cannot be reversed? Unless something happens because we don't know what's going to happen in 10 years. Things can change, but is there any sort of protection?
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
I mean, I'm just curious. I, I just want, is there protection for this plan? Well, I, I know, we're all different people with different ideas, but if this is going to further advance the district and be in benefit of educating our children, of course, I can't see why a board member would say no.
Yeah. So I, I think a couple of things. For one, a bond issue, if we were to put a bond issue question to the voters, that would be specifics. We're going to do this and this. So that really couldn't be changed without, you know, I mean, that, if the voters, so that's just for the bond issue though. I think the answer to the bigger plan is that we don't, we don't do this every 16 years. We do this every year, right? We have, we have, in, in other districts I've been a part of, that's really the solution. You pass the bond, you start building stuff and you start talking about what's next. That doesn't mean passing another bond is next. It just means this area of town is growing, this area of town is shrinking, this, you know, program is, that sort of thing. Because I do think every board probably wants their own agency to kind of create a vision for the future. So, is that, is that fair?
Thank you, you brought it down for me.
And, and if I may, Kathy, to just experience in the backside of districts who do this, right? It often outlives the, the long range of, you know, of the initiating board members. But when it's data-driven, it's goal-driven and it's working, it works over time. People see that. The proof will be in the pudding. I think you have a solid plan. You execute that plan and your support will build.
And, and phase one would stand on itself, by itself?
That's correct.
Yeah. And, and just for sake of clarity, we used phases with the budget. We're using steps with this just because we wanted to not mix terms. So that's why we're, this is step one. Because we didn't, we've just been through phase one, two and three and we didn't want to make that murkier. So, yeah.
Okay, I think we've had a chance to, we will schedule a workshop, but I don't want to cut this conversation off if anybody else has any other questions before we have a workshop to be, yet to be determined on the schedule. We've got a few things. It's going to be a busy June. And it was a busy May, so.
Diane?
I think the main part is we do want to hear from the community. And so as, as parents and as community members are watching this, please go to the website, fill the survey out. I think, Kelly, if you can say the email that if people have questions again, what is it? Info@259.net?
USD259.net and then that's US, or www.usd259.org/plan, P-L-A-N.
Thank you.
What's after plan?
Nothing.
Oh, okay.
Forward slash plan. But we do want to hear your input. We're, we're, we're going to gather this input. We're going to, we're going to truly take it into consideration of what we're looking at for the plan moving forward. If you don't want to fill out the survey, please contact a board member. Please contact a staff member. We want your input, no matter how you want to give it to us, whether it be a phone call, an email, the survey. I schedule coffee meetings with people all the time. If you want to have a conversation, reach out to me. But, but we genuinely want your feedback regarding this future plan.
Thank you Diane. Okay, Patrick, next item please. Oh, Melody?
Just to, to be able to piggyback on what Diane was stating, and actually when you mentioned every, there are different manners or methods of learning. And so when you state that we're, you want everyone's input, I'm, I'm sure that we all do, but I think there are more than, there's more than that way of simply going online. A lot of individuals are not going to respond to a, to a, a survey and a lot of individuals probably would not contact or call a board member, you know, individually to schedule. So will there be any other opportunities such as we had with, with the actual phases? And so that persons can either in a congregate or, you know, an open setting, have an opportunity to speak to us as a board or speak to the individuals that are, that are consulting on this? Is there any other opportunity for members to, members of the community to weigh in?
There's nothing scheduled at this time.
Okay, so only, so really the only way that we're going to hear from individuals is going to be by way of a survey or if they reach out to us personally?
Plus what we've already been told ahead of time, previous to this.
I'm talking about from this, moving forward.
Yeah.
So it's the survey. I just want to be clear on that.
And any board members more than welcome to schedule something, as long as it's clear that it's your meeting. Since we're all already, you're more than welcome to schedule anything you want to do on yourself personally.
Yeah, but typically, what, what I would like to make sure is that I'm not the expert on this and I would, I would, my preference would be that there would be persons there that could actually substantiate the data that drove us to, to the decisions that we're making. So that's, that's the difference in just simply hosting a meeting that you're going to listen to persons, but thanks for that suggestion.
Okay. Yeah, and we'll post the workshop too. Okay, Patrick, next item please.
Next item, under Operations, Second Review, Board of Education Meetings Calendar.
I'll entertain a motion or a suggestion or amendment on the calendar. Oh, this is the, I'm. Oh, that's, we were going to layer the workshops into it as well. Okay, so no motion needed tonight. Okay, Patrick, next item.
Next item, under Policy, Second Review, Proposed Update of District Policy.
And this is 1160, 1161, the Accountability and Equity Committee, which will replace current policy 1160. Any additional changes or concerns or questions about this policy? This will be the final reading. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the policy 1161, Accountability and Equity Committee?
I don't think it's on anymore.
It is.
Oh, okay, yes, now I can hear my echo. So with the other, with the meeting, it was the second review also, but we didn't adopt it. What's the difference?
With the calendar, we, we decided to take an extra read as all.
Okay, okay.
Usually we do it in two reads, but the calendar was way.
Okay, very, all right, understood. Uh, yes, so I did second.
Okay, so we, we have a motion to adopt the motion, the policy moved by Diane, seconded by Melody. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries 7-0. Patrick, next item please.
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome Katie.
Good evening, President Reser, Vice President Albert, School Board Members and Superintendent Beilefeld. I hope you're enjoying your summer. It's a busy time for our educators who are working hard in their various roles. Several of our teachers are teaching summer school, taking on extra summer jobs and continuing their professional development. They truly dedicate themselves year-round and I hope they're finding some time to recharge before this next school year begins. I would like to address an important point tonight. Last fall, we discussed the workload report, which highlighted some significant challenges our certified staff face. Here's a brief overview of the findings I shared with you in the fall. Nearly three-quarters, 74.8% of our certified staff felt that they didn't have sufficient planning time each week. An overwhelming majority, 86.5% reported that they couldn't complete all their required tasks within the standard workday. Despite all of the budgetary constraints we faced this year, it's evident that we missed a crucial opportunity to address some of the workload concerns for our educators. They have consistently expressed their need for more time and support and it's imperative that we respond to their valid concerns. As we move forward into next school year, we need to prioritize addressing these issues and finding solutions that alleviate the burdens on our educators. They deserve our support and recognition for their hard work and dedication to our students' success. And we look forward to working together with you to address these challenges. Thank you.
Thank you Katie.
Patrick, next item please.
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
I do not see ESOW, so I will ask for the next item.
Next item, under Reports, Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you. I'll keep it pretty short. Two quick things. I want to kind of echo what Katie said about teachers, you know, having the summer off, right? We know the reality is our teachers are putting in lots of hours. Hopefully they're unplugging, hopefully they're relaxing some too, but this building is busy all summer along with teachers learning, right, and taking classes and getting professional development along with teaching summer school, along with teaching camps and sometimes having second jobs. So thanks to our teachers, it, getting the summer off is kind of a misnomer. The other thing I wanted to bring up is just two calendar items that I know you guys are aware of, but June 27th, you know, we have another board meeting, but that morning will be our kickoff breakfast for launching the WPS Foundation. This is an exciting opportunity, I think, for our district to really look at all avenues for support and resources, be able to fill some gaps and remove some barriers for students to create equity. So we're excited to get that launched. And then we are full bore on planning for our first ever Rally on the River, which will be August 6th, where we, the superintendent had a crazy idea to try. be August 6th, where we, the superintendent had a crazy idea to try to bring the entire staff to Riverfront Stadium for one big pep rally to start the year. So the logistics people are indulging me, we'll see how it goes, but we hope all of you can make it that morning. We'll have some VIP seats on the field for you all. But really, just a fun day to celebrate teachers, talk about the new strategic plan, talk about the kickoff to the year, and all the cool, exciting things that we, we hope next year brings. So, August 6th in the morning, so. I think that's it. I'll pass it back to you, Stan.
Thank you very much. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, Board of Education Reports.
Knock, if you don't mind, we'll end, start at your end.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, knock. Hazel?
Nothing to report.
Uh, I have no Board of Education report. Diane?
No report.
Melody?
No report.
Julie?
Nothing to report.
Kathy?
Nothing.
Patrick, next item, and I also, I should call you Joseph one time, because while you were gone, I called Joseph Patrick once a meeting, so Joseph, next item, please.
It's a good, strong name. Next item, under Miscellaneous, New Business.
See no new business, next item?
Next item, Board of Education Requests.
Kathy, do you have any requests?
No.
Julie?
Just my workshop.
Yes, and we got that. You don't even have to make that official, you are. Melody?
No.
Diane?
No requests.
I have no request?
No.
Knock? Okay, Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Miscellaneous, Executive Session.
I move the board recess into executive session to discuss the agreed resolution of a potential legal dispute with the board's legal counsel pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and the open meeting will resume in this room at 10:00 PM.
Fifteen minutes would be, 10 o'clock, yeah, okay. I, I second that. Moved by Diane, seconded by Stan to move into executive session, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven zero, we'll be back at 10:00 PM. The board is reconvening after executive session, no action taken, no action needed. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Moved by Diane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Melody. All those in favor, say, raise your hand. Motion carries, sends her, we're adjourned till our next workshop, and then definitely our special meeting on June 27th, but we will inform the public on the workshops that we have coming up. Thank you.